Where is that? Okay. All right, we are live on YouTube at this point and it's all up on our school committee page. And I will just one more second. All right, I will call the meeting to order at 7:03. I've prepared a statement for this evening. Just to start things off. In the Jewish tradition, when someone has died, the headstone gets placed at the grave. It does not get placed at the grave until after the first anniversary of that person's passing. A small ceremony happens with the inner circle of family and friends, and it creates a space to not grieve alone on that difficult first anniversary. March 13th, 2020, Friday, the 13th. A day that will be ingrained in all of our memories. It didn't take long for us adults to figure out that this was another 9/11 or Challenger moment in the making. We were worried, our kids were confused. Each passing week was another step away from normal. The medical professionals and essential workers in our lives worked fearful and exhausted. We had a looming awareness of the fact that we weren't going back to work and that our kids weren't going back to school. Some of us tried to remain optimistic and find positives whenever possible. But we've all experienced a great darkness settle into our lives, our country and our world in turmoil. We were warned that this winter would be long and dark. These past few weeks have been some of the darkest and it is clear that so many of us are suffering. This was made obvious recently in community feedback received by the school committee. Constructive feedback is invaluable as it helps us gauge the needs of our stakeholders and the extent to which these needs are being met. That being said, the recent opinions were some of the most heated that I've seen in my time on the school committee. We've heard pleas from some parents to bring children back more. Meanwhile, others implored us to proceed with caution, to give more time to make changes and to not make changes to learning models that have been working well for their children. Every issue has at least two sides and we want to reiterate our deep and sincere commitment to hearing all of them. I know we're all concerned about how our children are experiencing the pandemic. Whether kindergarten, senior year, or any of the years in between, COVID has taken away so many of the exciting childhood rites of passage. It has become increasingly clear that COVID has taken over our children. It took the typical phases of childhood and it changed things. As parents, it's impossible to know what is normal and what is a problem in these unprecedented times. As we sit on the eve of the anniversary of when everything normal stopped, it all seems so utterly unfair. Our babies deserve better than this. We didn't see things happening like this. This wasn't in our plan. But we still have a ways to go in getting to the finish line and I simply ask you tonight to hold fast to the fact that we need each other to make it through this. As much as we all need a hug or to sit close to a good friend and share a full-throated, unmasked laugh, we need each other. What we could do without is venting our anxieties and frustrations onto one another. Recently, we've seen the language reach a fever pitch and in several cases, take on a tone that was unproductive, to put it kindly. Feelings are passionate and desperate on both sides. What I need to ask is this. Please keep it civil. Neither the school committee, our teachers, or Dr. Bucky has caused the pandemic and we are fully engaged in seeking solutions to get all of our students and teachers safely back into our buildings and on a normal school schedule. Please remember that all parties are acting in a way that they believe to be best in the best interests of our children and community. As elective volunteers, we are spending countless hours trying to manage through the pandemic. We are parents, we are part of this community and we share the same goals to have our children's lives returned to normal. We have lived a very difficult year right alongside of you and the personal and abusive discourse helps no one and we respectfully ask it to stop. In public comment last week, a teacher in our district shared that a meeting she recently attended began with a moment of silence. While increased vaccination efforts and warmer weather on the horizon bring some hope to the coming months, we sit here tonight staring at the anniversary of one year from when COVID crashed into us. I want to ask all of us to pause for a moment. A moment of silence, a break from the unending stress and anxiety that we all feel. A pause to remember the year during which we lost so much. Let's pause to honor those who have been on the front lines this past year, each fighting in their own way for all of us. Let's pause to remember that some of us have lost jobs and our livelihoods. Let's pause to remember our children and how COVID has undeniably changed them. Lost birthdays, lost proms, lost graduations, lost sports seasons and drama productions, lost bar and bat mitzvahs, lost holidays, lost times with grandparents and cousins and friends. Let's pause to remember those in our lives who COVID took away forever. And let's pause to think about how we heal as a community. None of us will ever be the same, but we'll still be here, living together and sharing this place we call home. So I ask that we take a moment and pause in quiet contemplation and honor that. Thank you. All right. We'll move forward with commendations. Donna, I've got you on for Evelyn.
Thank you, Sarah. Hello, everyone. Donna Zaski here. Thank you for the opportunity to highlight the educational team at Evelyn School. As many of you may know that we have a very supportive school environment, which is just perfect for incoming families that experience kindergarten and school for the very first time. I believe the current kindergarten team is one of my strongest since my arrival 10 years ago. And I'm sure things are very similar at Glover as all the teachers and paras have been working very hard this year on their Wednesday afternoons coordinating lessons and activities. Tonight, I'm going to highlight the work of our para-professionals as true contributors to our education throughout the COVID pandemic. Rebecca Brand has worked and trained our paras with effective ELA instructional strategies and has introduced Zoom technology and other educational platforms. The paras have managed the Zoom lessons with a high degree of success. And believe me, it wasn't easy for them to start when the environment was so different and new to them. With our hybrid model, we had students in school and also at home. And the at-home students were often supported by the paras with ELA foundations and math lessons on a consistent basis. The paras made all the difference in providing the support when their students were learning remotely. And this support helped complete a strong instructional support, excuse me, strong instructional program while rounding out our educational team at Evelyn. So I want to talk about each para just for one second, a few sentences about every single contributor. And our first one is Melena Conley. Melena plans engaging in fun lessons for the children and uses and creates her resources and games to play on Zoom. She seamlessly goes in and out of the classrooms to support students. She is always flexible. She's described as indispensable and goes above and beyond to support the students. Linda Ferris has learned a great deal over the years. Linda is very observant and has learned from classroom teachers she has worked under, such as Carol Spillane and this year, our new teacher Lauren Catalano. Linda has embraced the opportunity for more instructional training. Most recently, she was able to hold the reins of the classroom when Lauren had to be out for a three-day period. Linda pitches in without being asked and always thinks of ways to make things better and is always willing to help. Becky Hastings. Becky works in Beth Hacks classroom, which many of you know, and Becky has worked collaboratively with the other paras to share ideas and lessons. Along with the other paras, she works closely with the kindergarten teachers to ensure curriculum and pacing is consistent across the kindergarten classroom. Additionally, all the paras have been flexible when they've had a need for children to join from other classrooms. And then finally, we have Kathy Doman and Kathy was the right fit for Cara Herndine. Cara Herndine, as you know, came down from first grade from the Coffin School. And basically Cara said she couldn't do her job without the help of Kathy Doman this year because everything was brand new. I know it was a switch from first grade to kindergarten, but when you haven't taught kindergarten for a few years, it was definitely the needed support that Cara needed. Kathy is invaluable and basically all the paras have known for helping and pitching in. And the feature that all of them have is they don't need to be asked. They just see what needs to be done. If a little child needs support, if something's going a little bit amiss in the classroom, they always just pitch in. They know exactly what to do instinctively. And I have just been so excited to work with this group of teachers and paras at the Evelyn School. And I just want to make sure that we honor their work and because they are working very hard every single day. We are excited about welcoming the kids back in a week or so. So I just wanted to highlight the strong support and the working team that we have at the Evelyn School. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. I completely agree. I don't know all of those paras, but I know some of them and I know how hard they work and what an asset they are to all the classrooms across our district. So thanks for highlighting a few of those. Sarah Fox?
I just wanted to do a comma, a school committee commendation. But I too, I think that those kindergarten paras have a level of patience that I can never achieve, so they are clearly worth their weight in gold. I wanted to give accommodation to volunteers in the community that have been spending hours at their computers getting vaccine appointments for any teacher or faculty or staff that has asked for help. I think to date, last number I heard, no, not all of these were staff because they've been at this for a couple of weeks before the schools were on here, but there are over 200 people that they've gotten in Marblehead appointments. And I just, it's amazing and this is a real effort that is going to massively impact, you know, our ability to get people back quicker and more comfortable and safer. And I encourage anyone and everyone to reach out to your child's teacher, your child's para, you know, team chair, anybody that you know and say, make an offer to, you know, help someone get a vaccination appointment because these educators are at their desks all day and they don't have time to keep refreshing and refreshing. And anything we can do as a community, even if it's just one appointment, it's a huge help, but also I'll tell you, having gotten a chance to do it, it is like the most exciting feeling when you get that appointment for someone that it almost feels selfish because you're so excited about it at the end of the day. So reach out to anybody you can and help them. And I just want to thank these group of moms and I know there's one dad I saw doing it too. And it's just, it's amazing the time they're giving up to help, in many cases, total strangers. So I just wanted to commend them.
Thanks, Sarah. I believe that I'm going to ask Dan Bauer, he's got some commendations that we asked him to make a special note of tonight, not to steal Donna's thunder.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me here. And actually, very humbled that the work a number of our students have been doing to make contact with our younger learners. There's a group called Growing Together and it was coordinated by our very own Dr. Jamie Slavitt, our school psychologist, and two other adults, Dr. Shell, who's done a lot of work with the Social Emotional Learning Committee, as well as Elizabeth Peterson. And they've helped organize the students to create outreach opportunities. They meet with our K-6 students one time per week on Zoom. And I want to say that at this time, at least 25 of the K-6 students have been participating at various times. We have 13 students. They do things such as yoga, coloring, board games. It's just wonderful to hear our students being involved and certainly the adults. Dr. Slavitt said they've paved the way. The students have run with this. So we're very proud of them for this. And I just want to recognize the students involved with this in no particular order. We have Lucy New, Sophia Vatnik, Kiva McKernan, Sarah Martin, Caroline Wales, Maya Amzler, Char Platt Miller, Celine Urick, Lauren Case, Amelia Carr, Lily Childs, Andrea Gast, and Marissa Eisen. All 13 have just been wonderful and have done a great job with this and we're very proud of them and proud of the adults for pointing the way. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Dan. I also wanted to recognize, and Dan, I'm not sure if you have the names of these kids, how well the Family Feud night had gone. I think it was last night, that it was a success and it seemed to really sort of brighten some spirits.
It was awesome. We had over 80 seniors participate. So to see them lined up coming in with great excitement, they were in teams. They gave themselves team names and it was just great. It was a wide variety of students. So it was awesome to see them come in and so excited. And really, our faculty and staff that rose to the occasion. The hosts had masks, customized Family Feud. I hope there's no trademark infringements on that, but Christina Scholls did that. And our two senior class advisors need a shout out, Drew Bordeaux and Jade DeMello. They helped organize this and they broke it down into the room. So socially distanced, broke up by teams and went through a number of rounds where our teachers were the hosts and hostesses and did just a great job of providing entertainment. Our senior class officers were outstanding. They helped coordinate this. And it was just a wonderful event that wrapped up with the final round, which was livestreamed. And it just was a lot of fun to have and a lot of feedback from the teachers. We're just very excited to be part of it. The students were excited. And we hope that we're able to build on this and do other activities. So we're just very appreciative of all the efforts.
Great. Thank you.
Dan, my kids have gotten the benefit of those programs that your students are running. First of all, how organized those kids are, you know, getting all that stuff out is amazing. But also seeing my girls, how excited they are afterwards and how, you know, they really love seeing the older kids and being part of something the older kids are doing. It's really awesome.
Yeah, we're very blessed. Thank you. They're awesome kids.
Thanks, Dan. Does anybody else have a commendation? Megan?
I have a quasi-commendation. So I mentioned a few weeks ago that there's a crossing guard appreciation program going on right now, so I just want to reiterate that because our crossing guards are, keep our children safe. We had the Village SAC and it came up there today. And I think someone noted that, you know, they're shoveling the sidewalks for us when we have snowstorms. They're holding umbrellas for our children. So, you know, this is an opportunity to kind of acknowledge some of those unsung heroes that don't get a lot of appreciation. So I believe the deadline is March 24th, so you still have time to nominate your favorite crossing guard. We'll make sure that that information is available. I do believe it's going out through the PCOS as well, so keep your eyes out for it. And let's show some love to our crossing guards.
John, do you notice that up on Back Together?
It's in the weekly update. It was in last week. It will be in tomorrow. So the weekly update writes itself at school committee meetings. You guys foreshadow all the things that will be listed.
Any way we can help, John.
All right, anybody else with a commendation?
I wanted to, I don't want to drag this on, but Sustainable Marblehead puts out an educational newsletter, I think monthly, and they actually talked about the crossing guard thing. But there's a program and I'm going to call it the wrong name. It's something to do with get outdoors, get outside. And there's some tracking sheets by one of the high school students and her first name's Sadie. I apologize for not knowing her, for not remembering her last name. But it's a really fun way to get kids kind of outside and doing a few things and also give them something new to do a year into this. So that's great for sustainable and for students that are participating as well.
Thanks, Sarah.
Through the chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
You just can't make this up because the Sustainable Marblehead is also in tomorrow's update.
All right, that moves us on to Dan Howell, our student representative. Welcome, Dan.
Hi. So first of all, I'd like to also talk about the Family Feud that happened last night. It just went really, really well. When you're, you know, the senior class officer and trying to plan around things like that, something really new and different like this was kind of, we were kind of nervous about it because if kids aren't engaged, then, you know, it just doesn't end up being a fun time. But everyone was super enthusiastic. Certain, you know, teams like wore their own, you know, uniforms. Like there was a group that all wore different colored tracksuits and it was just great. And it was great to see people in the other cohort who in some cases, you know, I haven't seen since a year ago now, which is hard to believe. So I really hope that we can, you know, we have one successful event under our belt. So hopefully we can, you know, keep moving that forward and have more events in the future and more events for the other grades as well. So around a week ago, a survey was sent out with a new proposed schedule for students. And there were questions about how you prefer that schedule to the one that we currently have. And I can't say what the consensus of the survey was because I didn't see the results. I can say that students definitely appreciate being included on decisions like this and just being heard in that way, especially when it comes to their learning. So last week, I talked a bit about senior projects. So I have a few examples of different things that kids are doing. So senior project is a chance for seniors to spend the last quarter of the school year doing an internship of their choice. So one student I talked to who is going to college for nursing will be doing an internship with Nurse Elizabeth at the Glover School to learn about, you know, community-based nursing, the community-based nursing approach. Another student I spoke to who is very passionate about business will be working with Seaside Alert, a local company, to make a product fully herself and then eventually have it being sold under the Seaside Alert name. So start to finish the whole process. Another student I spoke to will be working with Mr. Gaddu, the high school band director, to learn about composing jazz arrangements. Another student I spoke to is doing an internship with the Third Citizen Theater Company in Salem. And another student who I spoke to, who is passionate about mental health, will be working with some of the health teachers at the high school to work on integrating more mental health things into the curriculum. Another student I spoke to will be working with Ms. Houtman, who is the middle school art teacher, and doing some work with her on art education and things like that. And I, for my senior project, so just in the past summer, the Jewel Tones and Luminescence a cappella groups recorded an album. So for my senior project, I'll be working with the woman who helped us do that and her company to record two singles, one for each of those two groups. So yeah, that's what I'm doing and I'm looking forward to it. So there are lots of great opportunities for students to do, you know, all sorts of things. This year, it seems like based off the kids I talked to, there's a lot of people doing things with teachers, either, you know, at the high school or at other schools, which I think makes sense to, you know, kind of stay close to home in that sense. But yeah, just a lot of great opportunities and a lot of, should be a good learning experience for all the students.
Wonderful. Thanks so much, Dan, and thanks for that, you know, that kind of that view into what some of the kids are doing. It's always really interesting to hear about where people's ideas take them and then, you know, the reality of sort of where kids start with what they want to do and then what ends up being able to be pulled off and attained. So it was fun to hear. Thank you.
No problem.
All right, that brings us to public comment. I do have two public comments noted on the agenda this evening. This first one at the start and then I've got another one at the end. So I will just kind of keep an eye on our time. And it looks like we've got five people right now. So we'll probably take those people and then we'll move forward and then have the public comment at the end of the meeting as well. So please remember to state your name and address for the record. So first up, I have Kim Day.
Hi there. Kim Day, 18 Liberty Road. I don't have anything prepared. I just wanted to thank the committee and Nurse Amanda Rivers again for moving forward with pool testing. And just to share that both my third grader and my sixth grader participated this week. They were part of the random selection for their class. They said it was a piece of cake. They didn't lose any time in their classroom. And I just really can't wait to hear more about how that progresses as we kind of get. This is only our first week, I know. So thank you again for moving forward with that. And then I know I saw on the agenda that you are going to be discussing pool testing potentially for the athletes. And I just want to encourage the committee to strongly consider mandating that pool testing simply because sports is optional for students. And there are definitely students who are not participating in sports because they don't necessarily feel comfortable with the modifications that are in place. And yet our athletes are participating in these sports where they're under six feet and under three feet and in close contact. And in some instances with towns that aren't just Marblehead. And then they're coming into classrooms with students and teachers who aren't participating in those sports, right, and who don't have that. So I don't want it to come across as like, you know, a punishment for these athletes by any means. I want it, I would hope that it would be a positive thing that they're doing all that they can do to keep their fellow classmates and their teachers and staff safe. So I just really want to encourage the committee to vote in favor of making pool testing for athletes mandatory. And thank you again for moving forward with that program.
Thanks, Kim. Next up, I have Jennifer Eaton.
Hi, good evening. I'm just speaking tonight on behalf of the CPAC committee on a probably completely different topic, but we just wanted to invite the community to our conference series, which starts next Tuesday. We've been having them monthly. But the next one will be next Tuesday, March 9th at 7:00 PM. And this one will feature Dr. Zach Rosetti, who is a professor at Boston University. And he'll be speaking on the topic of peer relationships, which I think is sort of a timely topic. And he has a background in research between friendships between students with and without intellectual and developmental disabilities. And he'll be sharing his insights on ways that parents, educators, and siblings can help or hinder the development of social opportunities and friendships. He's going to explore strategies which center on home-school collaboration, sibling roles, and relationships, as well as family engagement and community participation. And this is an event that we've co-sponsored with Student Services, along with Eric Oxford and CPAC. So we welcome everybody to join us. We have more information on our CPAC website. It's also on our CPAC Facebook page. You can find the Zoom link directly on there if you need any assistance in knowing where to find that. If you have any questions, you can reach out to us and we'll be happy to help. So we look forward to seeing anyone that would like to join us next Tuesday, March 9th at 7:00 PM. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Jen. Scott Solberg, I think I accidentally put your hand down as Jen was speaking. Did you still want to comment?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Scott Solberg, 1 Ramsey Road. I just wanted to give a couple of kudos. Thank you, Sarah, for your statement. I thought it was amazing, elegant and really pulling us together, getting us reoriented as a community. And that brings me to the second thing. I've had a chance to, you know, a lot of our parents are involved in volunteering on the different reopening committees and other SEL committees. And I just, this week, the things I've seen has just been amazing. Brian Noda has talked about his great teachers who spent all Saturday redoing their classes. You know, to give up a whole weekend day is a huge commitment with families and everything else. But, you know, Brian was just amazed to see them all there, working hard to get the classes ready on behalf of our children. That's a commitment going on. But I also, you know, poor Jamie Slava keeps getting called out for all the great stuff he does. And certainly Dan Bowers, the leader behind all of this as well. But this SEL work that's going on in our district has students leading their voice. So many students, so many parents, educators, student services staff, multiple combination of conversations to try to see how we can really support each other. It is a testament to the kind of positive energy that's going on in our community at the same time as we're all dealing with the uncertainty of our time. So just wanted to give a shout out to all that. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Next up is Alistair Connor.
Thank you. I'm speaking for many parents. In business, after a large campaign, you do a team recap to capture best practice and improve the process for next time. What have we learned and what actions are we taking to do better this budget season? Two years ago, we had a large deficit related to special education, transportation and numbers increases. We learned it is necessary to set aside money for these issues. To remedy the situation, the Special Education Fund was created and funded through the town Medicare surplus. We had building issues at Gary Coffin, Bell and Evelyn due to deferred maintenance. We learned we need to plan ahead for large capital improvement and maintenance costs and start saving years in advance. The Stabilization Fund was created to allow for future savings towards these costs. Unfortunately, it remains unfunded and I have not heard of any planning in this year's budget to put any money into it. In 2018, bills were paid inappropriately to remedy a budget deficit. We learned that oversight is necessary to have checks and balances and avoid a mistake that has major impact from just one person's choices. That it's important for school committee members to get into the nitty gritty of the budget and to ask hard questions. Yet at a recent budget subcommittee meeting, very few questions were asked. We had issues with technology this year that did not allow us to have options for quarantined or remote students to continue their teacher-led education. We learned that many other districts had already upgraded their technology and wifi in recent years to allow for a one-to-one technology ratio. We saw how pushing off upgrades set us up for failure and will not allow our district to remain competitive. We are currently budgeting for the bare minimum of upgrades to be done during April vacation, minimally resolving this issue and still not matching the level of other districts or allowing us to develop a better plan for the fall. COVID showed us that having a perfectly balanced budget does not prepare us for the unforeseen. Experts indicate that COVID is here to stay. Students will not likely have received vaccines by fall. Masks and spacing will still be necessary. We have figured out how to return K through six students to school, albeit in uncomfortable setups. But we have not figured out how to make lunch work for full days. We have not budgeted to upgrade our air systems with higher air exchange, UV lights or added humidity. We have not budgeted for additional air purifiers, properly fitting PPE, additional space, additional staff, exhaust fans, pool testing money for once public funding ends, or anything else that would make it more likely that all grade seven through 12 students can also return at three feet or six, let alone for a full day. Our current memorandum of agreement with the Teachers Union presented challenges as it did not allow for any flexibility as conditions changed and is based upon our current technology space and HVAC limitations. We have already negotiated a new three-year contract even though we have yet to make any leeway in altering our current contract or limiting conditions. Parents are asking to be heard. This year, parents asked for more information, clarification and answers than ever before. And yet there were still answers that were not forthcoming, such as how much space we actually had for students or what upgrades will cost until last week. Parents are making it known that in-person learning and increased hours are a priority in the district. Yet budget discussions do not address how the situation will be improved now or in the fall. The school committee represents this constituents. Your constituents are asking for the hard questions to be asked and answered. It is time to learn from our past mistakes and take actions to remedy them, to be proactive in our budgeting, to fund the stabilization fund and budget for unforeseen circumstances. The almost $400,000 in COVID grant money should not be used to balance next year's budget, but instead allocated now for this year and for next year to make up for the impact of COVID in the many ways our students need. Thank you for your time. Nine Cloutman's Lane, Alistair Connor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alistair. Emily Dewitt.
Hi, everybody. Emily Dewitt, 154 Atlantic Avenue. I just wanted to thank Sarah Fox for shouting out to all those people out there who are booking vaccination teacher, appointments for the teachers. It really is just showing how much our community is waiting on the sideline to help in any way we can. Nobody's asking us to do very much right now and everybody wants to step up. So I'd like to ask the school committee and Dr. Bucky tonight to advocate for a plan to cover classrooms if and when our teachers need to physically be at their vaccination appointment, if it coincides with the school day. I'm nervous about, you know, a further learning loss if somebody has to cancel a class or there's no substitute in place because I know we're at a deficit when it comes to subs. You know, parents who are quarried or parents who can be quarried quickly, maybe some of our seniors at the high school even, were willing to step up and step in for those vaccination appointment times or maybe in the aftermath of a vaccination appointment where a teacher suffers from some side effects. I just, we're, we're waiting on the sidelines to help. And this is going to be a problem with thousands of teachers needing to be in thousands of places at different times of the school day. And I hope you'll consider our request to be of service. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. All right, that will close out this section of public comment. We did not get around to getting the minutes for February 4th in this time, so they'll be in there next time. That one is up on YouTube though, so if anybody needed to go back to reference anything there, that meeting is available. So John, that leads us on, oh, Sarah, did you have a question?
I told Nan in the Teaching and Learning Committee that I would give a plug for volunteers and this seems like a good segue if you don't mind.
I think actually John's got a little bit going on with that this evening, so maybe just hold off for a minute. And John, is that, it sounds good?
Sure, yeah, I can include that in my update. Actually, if people go to the website, we have put on the banner page of the traditional Marblehead Public Schools website, a place for people to start their quarry paperwork. Because as we look at different learning models, the parent volunteers that are out there, we're going to be bringing them in. So hopefully people will start that process so that they can be involved. And I will just briefly dish to Nan because she had sent me a text earlier to make sure that I said something and I want to make sure that I get it covered. So Nan, if you could take it away.
Well, you just did a great job. And I think between you and Sarah, you're, you were just about to hit both of the things that was hoping that would get presented. In teaching and learning, we did talk about our principals connecting personally with their, the lead either PTO or PCO presidents and having those presidents individually at schools create signup geniuses and manage and organize the vast amount, as many volunteers as we can recruit. There'll be a central location for you to visit, put your name in, put the times and dates that you can volunteer. It will be very easy to sign up. We are asking that if you sign up, that you really double check your calendars and ensure that you can make that commitment to our schools because we will really be leaning into that support to be able to run effective and healthy recesses, lunch, transitions and hallways. So that, that will be happening and then also having the quarry form online is great. And then finally, I've, have been so lucky to be connected with Muffy in town from our boosters. They are organizing a fundraiser for our Marblehead community to come together to help support the costs that are going to be related to outdoor instruction and lunches and supervision. So we are going to look for funding to bring tents to every school and outdoor spaces for kids to sit and eat lunch and recess. So if you could be on the lookout in the community for some communication from your boosters, that's just been such a wonderful, such an easy group to work with, so eager to support and get, and so whether you can volunteer your time or you can contribute your finances, we are going to all pool our resources and bring our kids back and provide the best we can. And it's going to be really exciting.
And I think it's important just to underscore outdoor learning spaces and to give people a sense in the spirit of true transparency, how much is a tent rental?
So the one tent rental for the high school alone is $16,000. It's just one tent and we're hoping to get six. And then, and I was even hoping to get two for the high school. So it's, we're talking close to $100,000 for, and that's, that estimate is from March, like March 17th to May 22nd. It's not even until the end of the year. So it's extremely expensive.
Have we looked into purchasing tents and just paying the labor to tent companies to install and erect them?
So I have and it, it comes down to the fabric is flammable. And so unless we can find companies and those are very expensive to find the tents that could, that are not flammable.
All right, so, Megan, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. So I just want to follow on from that, Nan. I mean, the boosters are always so supportive and I just want to, you know, really make sure that we recognize how lucky we are to have a group like that. I mean, obviously we have a number of people and groups who are willing to support us, but I'm just very appreciative, Nan, of you collaborating with them and vice versa. I think also just to highlight this piece because it came up in the SAC that I sat in as well, is, and I promised that I would also make this public plea, so for both substitutes, lunch pairs, but it also came up that we're in need of crossing guards too. I know I just, obviously I'm on a crossing guard kick today. But I think for substitutes especially, we've talked about this, especially when it comes to our budget a number of times that we have struggled this year to find substitutes. So if there are people in our community who have experience with, you know, with teaching, then it would be great if we could really utilize those resources and the lunch pairs as well. So we can get our kids back in, they can have their lunches, the teachers can have their lunches as well. You know, this is my public plea. You know, Emily did just talk about it in, in her public comments, so this is where we could really use some help.
Great. So I'm going to turn it over to Amanda Rivers and to Greg Saglarsky to give you an update on pool testing and pool testing for athletes in the fall two season.
Hi, I guess to start off, we started on Monday. I was able to get all the elementary schools on Monday and Tuesday in some capacity. A lot of it was just trying to figure out how it was going to work, how the kids were receptive to it. It was awesome. Honestly, everyone, I didn't have any problems with it. The kids are really good. You're able to take a couple of kids out at the same time because I register them ahead of time. It takes about 30 to 45 seconds. It's longer to kind of explain it than to actually do the swabbing. And then they go back to class. They miss under a minute worth of class time. If anything, some of the kids were like, wait, why am I not coming out? So it was nice to see that, like, the kids that weren't coming out were like, wait, but can I do it too? And I'm like, well, talk to your mom, have your mom sign you up for your dad and, you know, next time I'll come grab you. I had teachers stopping me in the halls, asking if they could be part of a pool. So for starting a program and having it, you know, kind of come to life over the two weeks to have so many people sign on and want to do it right away was really awesome. We're up to 840 people, which is just about a third of the student population. I went to the high school today, so I got a cohort at the end of the day. Nan was there and Dan saw it. We were able to get 72 people, teachers and students in probably 20 minutes. And the kids were really awesome about waiting. I took their names, scanned it in, swabbed them, next one, took their names, swabbed them, you know. So it was, it was really awesome to see the kids kind of take the initiative too, especially high schoolers and say like, yeah, I want to be part of this. So we had 225 high schoolers sign up so far, so one cohort, it's about half of that. And we had 71 people show up. So that is, for me, like personally, way more than I anticipated it. And I was so impressed with the fact that the students themselves were willing to wait and do it and wanted to be part of this. So next step would be the sports testing. So they did check with the lawyer, the town lawyer. And due to the fact that the test or sports are voluntary, it can, we can mandate it. It's something that we are able to do as a school committee. And, you know, earlier in the week, me and Dan kind of, or me and Greg touched base to kind of see who was signed up so far. And between all the teams, there's about 15 to 20% of each team that's already signed up, so not huge numbers. So obviously that would have to change if it was mandated. And we were thinking of like how we would go about the testing and the best way to do it with what we have for our limiting factors, which would be the courier service only comes certain days to pick up samples. And samples we can really only keep for about 24 hours before they need to get shipped out. Our courier comes on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So that really means we can only do the testing Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And there are several different teams that are practicing in different capacities, whether inside or outside. So Greg and I sat down and kind of talked about it. And what we would plan if we were to mandate this within there is to do a third of each team every week. Each team, every student would be designated into one of three groups. And then, you know, week one, we would do group one. Week two, we would do group two. Week three, we would do group three. So we'd get a third of the population every time. Going over what we have for resources, which is me and Greg. That was what we could do and get it done and get the samples out and be able to kind of utilize it. It also gives us some wiggle room that if like someone in group one was absent, we have like two more days to get them, to get them out on the Friday or the Thursday courier service. And this means every student on every team would get tested twice over the course of the season. So then talking about if we had a positive pool, what we'd do. A lot of the stuff would be similar to kind of what we're doing already. When a positive pool is identified, I would go in, I would do the binax test and we would find out who the actual positive is. From there, we would kind of just keep it to what we're doing anyway with the positive. We would identify the positive on the team. We would do the close contacts and quarantine as we need necessary, trying to like limit the amount of students that need to quarantine for every positive. But it also gives us a good idea of looking at like the sports teams as like a cluster population to see if there is an increase within that specific population of coronavirus due to the fact that they are closer together. You know, they don't have that six feet, they're wearing the mask, but it's not perfect. It doesn't always stay up during the sports. So that is the plan that we wanted to present to you, the school committee, to do mandatory testing within there. If it's not mandatory and it's just optional, we're still able to go into the team and take what we have for numbers to kind of use again that as it's a little cluster sample. It obviously wouldn't be as accurate or informative as being able to get a fourth of the team when we only have like, or a third of the team, when we only, like 33% versus 10% is kind of a big difference every week. Or a third of the team when we only like thirty-three percent versus ten percent is kind of a big difference every week.
I think just just to tack on to the end, nice job, Anna, that was perfect. Um I think how we'll really look on a kind of week to week thing logistically. Um it would, it would be a challenge, but I think if if we had to do, we would get it done similar to. This year in general, um I would envision probably something like on Monday, having a football and cheer go together. Tuesday volleyball and half of track go together because track practices half uh some days, half the other days. Wednesday, get the other half of track and then anybody else that we missed. And that would allow for all of us, uh all of the athletes to get tested if if you know, we do go down this road.
Before we take questions, just want to extend uh my appreciation for the work that Greg and Amanda are doing. When you determine that you want to be an athletic director, you didn't realize you were going to be an epidemiologist and a team physician. And pool testing is new for all of us and I just really think that they have both done a great job of addressing what school committee asked them to explore.
Absolutely, I completely agree and um you know, both both Amanda and Greg touched base in in reopening this morning. Um and I appreciate sort of having um, you know, the additional information from just then, so. The great, great presentation.
Thank you, and and just just to give you guys an idea of numbers as well, we have about two hundred and thirty-four athletes. Plus nineteen coaches, which would give us a uh two fifty-three would be our number we're working with. Total.
Any questions, Megan?
Um so this was great as usual, I mean, we kind of, Greg, I feel like we're always like. Come back with information right away and you you know, you always, you always get it done and Amanda, you know, I. I know I said last week that you've done an amazing job just pulling this together really quickly, so I appreciate the work you've done on this again. Um I I think the sports thing is one piece, I guess one thing that we talked about as well is um other activities. So I just didn't know if either of you have some information on, um you know, I think one of the things that came up was marching band or. Some of those activities, you know, that are not necessarily just athletics.
Yeah, so just just from from an athletics side of things, the marching band would be out at our home football games, there's three of them currently right now. Um that would be the only time they'll really deal with with athletics in general, but uh if someone else wants to chime in on as far as clubs or other. Extracurriculars, that would be appreciated because that's all I can really talk to.
So as far as like any other activity that's going on, I would kind of proceed in the same uh manner, anything that we feel like. Um like with March, we talked about marching band, just because again, you have the woodwinds, you have the brass instruments and. There's a higher like even with spacing, it's an aerosolizing aerosol, yeah, sterilizing um potential there. Um so. I think initially we were focusing on the sports because that is especially with like football, you're tackling each other. Um but with any of the activities too, if we would then want to go and add on to that. We would kind of go like the same thing, if we if we mandated it, we would then say we're gonna do. Groups within each group and shoot for a third of the group every week and kind of continue on like week one, week two, week three. So we're getting a decent amount of samples of each group every week.
So Amanda, to sort of hop on that, if we. You know, obviously you have a capacity, like you yourself as a human being and as a school nurse have a capacity. So if we mandate um the clubs um. Along with marching band or whatever, um how is that gonna have, at what point do we have an impact on testing the general student population?
So.
I apologize, this wasn't the question I gave you earlier.
I know, but if you, so if you think about it in um. Like when you're coming up with a sample size, basically um what I'm trying to do is just like a random sample of anyone that's signed on. For the element like K through twelve. Um when you're doing the clubs and you're doing the sports, that's more of a cluster sample, so you're picking a specific group of people and you're taking a s- random sample. In between there or a selected random sample if we're doing like group one, group two, group three. Um so as far as the capacity, I imagine, I don't know a lot about high school um. Clubs, so I might be misspeaking here, but I'm pretty sure most of them have um like a teacher that runs it or supervises it. If that's the case, there is ways to have them be able to do the testing. With the biggest constraint is the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday is kind of one that needs to get done just because of the carrier and we need to get the last samples out on Thursday. Um if I can touch base with the who's doing it, I can show them how to do the samples. And we can work way around that, like me and Greg were talking today, ways that he'd be able to test. Even the football players when they're out on the field, so we would know what the numbers are and then I can just do the computer aspect before I ship them off.
Okay. Uh Sarah Fox?
I I mean, the sports makes very good sense because uh the respiratory or increased respiratory rate, the lack of being able to distance. The marching band, the increased arrows, I'm gonna screw up this word too.
Right.
You know what I mean? Um but you know, so that makes a lot of sense. Um I don't know the scope of some of our other clubs, but if they're able to not have increased. Um respiratory output. And remain masked and distanced, I don't see that those clubs. Offer a heightened risk above and beyond the classroom setting, if you will, whereas the other ones we identified do. Offer a heightened risk above and beyond. Um and I think that's kind of the deciding factor here. At least, you know, when you look at it kind of as from a analytical point of view, um. The other thing to remember is too, these are part of our student body, so these will all count towards the idea of testing more of our student body. So if we're hitting an extra two hundred kids or an extra, you know. Seventy-five kids each week, that's seventy-five more bodies we we're hitting in our student body, which is the the more, the better because it gives us a more accurate view.
Um I, one of the questions that I had asked this morning to just follow up on, um and I, uh Principal Bauer may need to weigh in here. Um regarding the marching band, so that in 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 how I understand it is a credited course and so. I don't, I I I wonder about the logistics of actually being able to mandate testing for participation if we've got kids. Who are in a class during the school day um and there and there are very specific guidelines um on how marching band and and all. And all bands is being pulled off at this point, um and it's at greater than than six foot distances. Um so I don't know, Principal Bauer, were you able to find anything out on that?
Um I I did in a couple of areas, so certainly, you know, as they move on um in into this piece. It's it's um with the the spring, they've they've already had the the course in in the fall, so. And and in fact, a lot of our clubs haven't really come back yet, as if you remember for. We talked about in the SAC today, we're looking to bring more clubs back. But uh to to Sarah Fox's point that the the clubs that would come back would be able to space in a in a different way, so. Um you know, it's a, it's a, we do have rockcapella groups that are coming back, but as you know, that they've allowed the singing indoors and the spacing is ten feet. Some of those are are classes, some of those aren't, so there's a lot of juggling there.
So I guess I'm inclined to ask for a motion um. And and feel free if if people want to add on to this, we don't have to take the motion, we can tweak it before we actually.
Actually, Sarah.
Yeah.
We're got voted down last week, procedurally, we can't make a new motion, one of the. People who voted with the prevailing party has to amend the previously voted motion, so only Emily, Megan or David. Can amend the previously voted um motion. If they choose to.
So does that? So does that negate me from uh asking for a motion?
I think so, actually. I think it's just a weird procedural thing.
Yeah, I'm I'm not so sure that we can't bring another motion forward.
I think we can, it's just me, I voted in the affirmative and Sarah voted in affirmative, so what she's saying is that I that I can't ask for the motion. Or make it.
We can't move it, you have to make it and it's not mo- it's not just making a motion, you have to make a motion to amend a previously voted motion. It's a weird Robert's rules thing.
I will make an um motion to amend the previous. Vote, motion. To mandate that participation in school athletics be contingent upon participation in the pool testing program as defined. Okay, I'll rewrite it. To mandate. That participation in school athletics be contingent upon participation in the pool testing program.
You're gonna need a second.
Hold on, yeah, we've got a motion.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
All right, Megan moved, uh David second. All right, uh Greg.
I'm sorry, if I throw a wrench into this, does this include coaches as well? We have nineteen coaches that would need to either be included or or excluded in this, I just want to make sure that's clear.
We cannot mandate employees um test.
I would agree with that. Can we suggest it?
Officially suggested.
We can suggest they wear tutus every day, I mean, but it's their will.
So I.
Yeah.
So are we not? Including marching band and any kind of musical activity in this?
Correct, per this motion, it would not be. I think we're wading into very sticky territory, given that it is a class versus.
So it is still a class?
Yes.
This.
They've received, right, right, Dan, they've received credit for this.
Yes.
Okay.
And and again, I just want to make it clear, marching band and and all. All of the instrumental as well as the choral groups are all have all have specific guidance from the Department of Education. On how they can occur, where they can occur, at what, and they're at greater distances, I believe band is at ten feet. Uh distances because it is unmasked and it is aerosolized, so. You know, the, there's a lot of stipulations on that group.
Can we highly encourage them to participate?
We can highly encourage them to participate.
Yes.
I highly encourage everyone to participate.
Right.
Any other questions on that? All right, we've got a motion and it's seconded, uh Sarah Gold, yes, Megan Taylor.
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Emily Baron?
Yes.
And David Harris?
Yes.
All right, that passes five to zero, so um Greg? Thank you.
Yep, can we get like a like a a timeline on this, like when I would have to have them start, at least right away, is it? Me, it's gonna take a little bit of time to get them registered through uh Beacon Health, I'm sorry, whatever it's called there. Um I'm not sure how long that's gonna take. Um in at the same time, are we gonna prevent kids from playing like starting Monday, starting tomorrow?
I think it's reasonable to say by next, anybody not registered by next Friday forfeits their ability to play until they register.
I actually think it'd be reasonable to say anybody not registered by Monday, it was, it took thirty seconds.
It did, no, I know, I was just be, I'm trying to like, it, everybody might not get the message, but then again, like these coaches see their kids and know how to get a hold of them.
So.
Okay, so so yeah, just just so I can, I can relay that to them, what what are we, what are we saying here?
Um.
I would.
We have to also remember, it's not just getting them registered, it's Greg Greg doing the the legwork and paperwork to in with Amanda to find out who's registered comparative to his roster. So I just don't want to give him an unrealistic idea of, you know, him and Amanda getting their piece of it done.
We need close to two hundred kids to register, maybe not quite, maybe a hundred seventy-five kids to register. Um.
I. I think we've, we've voted that we want the testing and I think. We understand that um. Based on the numbers. That Greg and Amanda will make an effort to get it done as soon as possible.
We do need to set a date, though, I think.
Well, the motion, the motion, the motion didn't have a date, so I guess now somebody wants to make a motion.
Well, I guess the motion's live now, so without a date, goes into effect tomorrow without a date. I mean, it's effective immediately. We can give them a grievance period or a leeway period to what, I mean, you said Monday, I thought Friday, does Wednesday seem reasonable?
Yes, so can I get a motion to allow for? Families to have until Wednesday.
March tenth.
March tenth, thank you, John, uh to enroll in the pool testing program. And to enroll in the full testing program in order to be.
So moved.
Continuing athletics. Sarah moved.
Uh uh I'll second, but I just want, can I just get a point of clarification on that? They just have to register, I know that there's work Greg has to do too, so we're not putting that mandate on Greg.
Well, no, because he couldn't even start till the next week because of the couriers and getting it all done anyway.
Right, as long as they're registered.
They need to register by Wednesday.
Okay.
Okay, and then also just to throw it out there too, just so I'm I'm aware, so there's a, like I said, about two hundred and fifty-three athletes or athletes and coaches. Are Amanda and I expected to do all of the testing, just so I'm on the same page?
You talked about doing it in thirds, right? Does that work for you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
The what what you put forth this evening as doing the thirds is is the program that we just voted on.
Okay, thank you.
Point, I mean, I think Amanda said that she can teach adults to do it, right, or to um. You know, help facilitate kids getting tested, so can we, maybe Amanda can help coaches learn how to do it so that coaches are responsible for their team? If that, so it's one less thing that you two have to. Like be at every practice.
If they're given the material and we just go, like I go through it with the coaches, they can get it done um before practice, like they can even do it like on the field.
Exactly, so if that might be an easier way to facilitate it if the coaches are the ones who.
I think we're getting out of our purview.
I was just gonna say through the, through the chair, if we could let the logistics up to the superintendent, the athletic director in the pool testing nurse. We will get all of this, now that you have given the mandate, we will put it into effect.
Wonderful.
We make the policy, they do their thing.
All right, so we do have a motion um to 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 enforce this by uh Wednesday, so. Um I'll call for a vote, Sarah Gold, yes, Megan Taylor.
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yep, yes.
Emily Baron?
Yep.
And David Harris. Uh can you turn your mic on?
Yes.
Thank you, all right, that passes five to zero. All right, thank you both, uh Greg and Amanda, very much, um you know, this, this is important, um this is important to our teachers, so I, you know, I am very grateful that. That you guys put so much effort into this and and came to speak with us tonight. Right, John?
Great, so that moves us to a learning model update and at our last meeting, we'd uh had uh the middle school principal. Matt Fox and the high school principal Dan Bauer outline a potential uh change in schedule. And you all requested that uh they uh get some more information. And so some surveys went out to parents and students and they're gonna report back on the uh results of those surveys. And then we'll talk about uh next steps for seven to twelve, so we'll start with uh Principal Fox at the middle school.
Am I able to share my screen?
Uh I will allow you to do that.
Thanks.
Right. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So Dan and I put together um some of the numbers and some of the things we were looking at, uh that have we've. Figured out in the last week. Uh the first thing we're looking at are two options, we just want to remind everybody the two options we're looking at, option A. Sort of staying with the current hybrid models, um what we did is we took a look at both models with some positives and some implications. Obviously, with nothing changing in the current hybrid models, if that is for option A, um we could. There'd be no impact on family drop offs, on time and learning, um there'd be no schedule adjustments to make for students and things like that. Uh it would also continue to allow um some curriculum access for students who are absent or quarantined. Um some implications, obviously, it differs greatly from the K to six approach that's happening now. Um and in-person learning would stay at two days versus four. So option B, we took a look at, we we described it to you uh last week, uh this is what it would sort of look like generically. Uh because obviously the eight to eleven and the eleven thirty to two thirty blocks will look different within the high school and the middle school. Um but essentially, it would be three to four classes per three-hour block. Uh with a remote day on on Wednesday, uh due to some shared staff and and things like that. So some of the positives of option B, uh obviously are more in-person time, that's why this model came to head is that, you know, we were tasked with finding some more in-person time. We would go to twenty-three hours per week. We would go to twenty-three hours per week, uh, versus sixteen. Um, middle school, the classes get a little bit longer, and we'd be able to have some in-person advisories, and it would reduce remote classes or hybrid students to only being on Wednesdays. Implications, a loss of total instructional hours at the high school, um, a lot of the high school scheduled members, both cohorts, uh, together remotely. There'd be different arrival and departure times each day, uh, so that means current drop-off and pickup plans, uh, for families need to change, and that's the, that's the big hump that we brought to you last week with the schedule, um, that was a worry with us. Uh, it could lead to more students going remote due to varied start times, um, and then there's implications of that. A jumper remote could lead to, especially in my school, rescheduling, uh, of a team, a grade, or possibly even the entire school, um, which is impactful for the fourth quarter of the year. Uh, and there'd be less access to curriculum remotes, um, uh, for classes that are students of, who are quarantined. So our survey, uh, we had some, we had fairly good responses for our survey. We had five hundred and twenty-three parents and four hundred and twenty-four students, uh, this is a seven through twelve survey. Um, we asked basically four questions. Uh, we started with something really basic, which is, do you like the current hybrid model? Um, before I go into talking about these numbers, you're gonna see we asked four questions to basically, well, the next question's the big one, to four different groups. Um, we have high school, uh, parents, high school students, middle school parents, middle school students, and then of sort of the fifth bonus, uh, was Dan and I also asked our staffs which model they prefer too. Um, I will summarize all our results with one word. We had mixed results. Uh, there was no solid leaning one way or the other for all, uh, five of those cohorts that we talked to. Um, so if you take a look here, this, this sort of exemplifies, this is the first sort of our, our first trip into mixed results. Uh, you can see that when we asked, do you like the current hybrid model, students, um, overwhelmingly, uh, responded, yes, they do, while parents did not. You know, parents were sort of split fifty-fifty, while both groups of students were really in the seventies. So this is, uh, just a taste of that mixed, uh, approach. Dan's gonna go into the next question, which was the big question, one of the big questions, which was, which model do you prefer? Dan?
Thank you, Matt. Um, so the next question, a- as Matt said, uh, we not only asked the high school students' parents, the middle school parents, and middle school students, we also asked our faculty, so, uh, very mixed, as you can see. You can certainly see, on the one side, uh, the model that would be considered or proposed, um, the, the parents have selected more along the lines of the proposed model, the AMPM, where students really just wanted to stay in the current model. So you can see the numbers, as there, you can see the flip with the parents, uh, on, on both, in both schools. And when you, we asked the faculty, it was interesting to see that we had a mix between our two schools, where at the high school, we had fifty-five percent would like to stay in the current model, forty-five in the proposed, and at Matt's school, it was a flip, uh, twenty-five in the current and seventy-five in the proposed model. So definitely flipped throughout, um, and any student feedback I had, uh, throughout the course of the week indicated the piece of, uh, just staying in the current schedule. So question three, um, is, is really the big question too, because as Matt said, the concern is movement, uh, to learning models, being able to accommodate students going from remote to hybrid and hybrid to remote. Hybrid to remote is certainly the one that is, is most challenging, uh, to make sure that we, we have, and I can speak at the high school, uh, as we know, sections that have teachers and sections that do not, so, uh, and you can certainly see with that piece, uh, we, there was movement in that. Uh, we, we thought it was important to ask the same question to both parents and students, to get their feedback, so you can see that there was a considerable number that would move, um, cohort based on, on, on that piece, uh, on both sides.
And before we go to the next slide, the vast majority of the movement that you're gonna see between this question and the next question, vast majority, were from families that reported as hybrid. So the move that they would be making would be to remote. So that's the vast majority of the movement that we're looking at here, the slide, the next.
Right. So as we move on to the next, uh, question, is the one that if we were to move from six to three feet, um, would you change your current instructional model? Um, and as you can see, the numbers, uh, crept up more, um, for those that would. So we went from the teens up into the twenties, um, uh, across the board on that, with, uh, parents and students at both the high school and the middle school. So, uh, that was a considerable jump, um, with that particular question. And then, um, just calling through all the data, just so that you can see all the data that's called through, it's basically put on one piece right here, where you can see the comparison, so you can see the mixed results that we have, particularly, uh, with the students and the parents, um, and, and certainly both the current model, like the current model and model preferred, uh, and the consistency with the, the change that would occur if, uh, we did go with the AMPM, uh, would they move? And then a much higher increase of moving out of the instructional model, if we went from six to three-foot spacing. And then I felt, um, obliged to put this in, because I did have the junior class officers reach out to me, and they conducted their own survey without my, uh, soliciting, and, and I actually met with them the other night, uh, because one of the themes that, that I've heard from the students, and we've had some students speak at school committee, and done a great job doing that, advocating for themselves. Um, I felt very, I was very proud of the juniors to come for me, uh, forward to speak with me, uh, it, it was a great discussion, and, and if you look at just their own feedback that they did with their own poll, the majority prefer the old current model over the new model. I put some just anecdotal information, some quotes that they put in, in terms of that, uh, the big piece, the theme that goes to there is settling in the change, and I know today in our SAC meeting was pointed out that the high school we've had, uh, nine schedule changes, I guess I miscounted, uh, but every little change, moving from the remote to hybrid, back and forth, that does count and it adds up. Uh, and I think the other piece too is, the students just felt frustrated that they feel like they're not listened to, um, and certainly that we can do a better job listening to the school, Marwood High School, listening to their mental health concerns, uh, and certainly they do, they do, you know, prefer to be in-person classes, but there's a lot of hesitation, um, throughout with the model change at this time. So I thought it was important, and I told them I would present this information, uh, to the school committee, so their voice is heard.
And, and I think in summary, you know, Dan and I spoke this morning at the, at reopening, and you know, one of our, one of our overarching concerns is, you know, the feedback, feedback that we've heard, um, had concerns about making a change, if there might be another change coming down the road, uh, with so much happening at the state level at this point, um, you know, would this be a short change in, you know, prior to moving to yet another change? Um, and so that's sort of the, the, the feedback we've heard, uh, that I've heard in particular, uh, from parents and from a couple students who said, well, does this mean we're, we're, we're not gonna come back, you know, more? Um, because then that, will that be another change? And so Dan and I spoke to that this morning to the, to the reopening committee.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think that's, you know, that's a valid concern. Um, I was at the high school SAC this afternoon, um, and, and Dan provided some time at the end of the meeting, or towards the end of the meeting, for students and parents to weigh in, um, and teachers did as well, and, and that was definitely something I heard loud and clear. Um, and I think from my seat, um, that, that's a concern as well. Um, you know, I've got an eighth grader, um, and, and he and I actually had a conversation about this, and we also are a divided household. I would like to see them in more, um, and he sort of likes what, what's going on right now. Um, so it certainly echoed the results that we're seeing as a whole. Um, so I think, you know, in my mind, we need to, and one of the reasons I wanted this data was that we need to avoid making too many more changes. Like, if we're gonna do a change, let's do a change, and then get through to the end of the year with what that change is, um, and that's, that's kind of, that's kind of where my head is at currently. Uh, Sarah, I know you've got your hand raised.
So, thank you so much for all this data. Um, it's, it's very helpful to see it laid out this way. Um, two things jump out at me. One's kind of surprised me that the majority of parents and students, although it's a minor, like, a, a, but, it's a majority by a slim margin, but the majority don't want to change. Um, and that, uh, that has to be considered. And then the other big thing is, our focus and our precipitous for changing this quickly was the mental health status that we're hearing of so many of our students. And the students really seem to say they don't want the change right now, and from the, the few comments we're seeing, they're saying it's because they feel it, it's, it's, you know, changing their new norm, it's another stress. Um, and I, I think it's incumbent upon us to look at the fact that, are we changing just because we can change? Or are we changing because we are listening to our students and hearing them say a change will help us and benefit us? Um, because if, if this is going to not benefit them in this mental health crisis, and it's also, um, po- possibly going to add a new layer to it, um, I, I'd be hard pressed to do that. I mean, at some point, the state's going to mandate certain things and we'll have no choice. Um, but I want to make this as easy on our students as we can. That's the best way I think we can support them, um, because at the end of the day, it's about the students. And so that's just my, my two cents.
I just want to piggyback on, uh, what Sarah is saying, that, you know, we are listening to the students, and it, as a longtime high school principal, it shouldn't come as any surprise that adolescents and their parents differ greatly in what they think is best. And so the students, um, I think first and foremost, are saying if there's a change on the horizon, which the commissioner is speaking to the Board of Education tomorrow, and requesting the, uh, latitude to what can be counted as structured learning time, and that could change the ballgame significantly for districts. And we're, uh, currently leading with the K to eight work, uh, or K to six work that we're doing. Um, if he tomorrow mandates that it's April fifth, we will have gotten our students in, uh, weeks ahead of that. Um, and we are exploring, you know, adding lunch in the full day, uh, for that K to six piece, but making a change right now, um, as the high school, middle school quarter change is going to be April fifth, um, I think that we are well-served to listen to the students and to teachers as well, because making a change for three weeks for them is also difficult. So it would be my recommendation to you, uh, that we stay with the current model, uh, until April fifth, and see what happens over the next several weeks, particularly with the Board of Education and the Commissioner, and with vaccination and ongoing negotiations with, uh, MEA, um, I think that we are well-served to follow that path.
Megan? Um, so, I agree with everything that you've said, and, um, you know, I want to echo Sarah's comments on, thank you, Dan and Matt, for putting this together, because it's really useful information, um, to kind of see where everybody, um, you know, where everybody's perspective is, and Sarah, as you said in your opening comments, there are at least two sides to every, every single scenario that we, that we go through, and here's another example of that. So I, I think one of the things that I'm hearing too, um, is that there's a lot of anxiety out there in the community, across the board, right? From families, students, staff, our, our school committee, there's a lot of anxiety just with COVID, um, in general. Um, I think also for where we're leading up to getting K through six in March fifteenth, there's some anxiety around that, which I think we need to acknowledge. Um, but I think also with the unknown piece of it, and there's a lack of control that, that you feel, you know, there's a sense of lack of control with that uncertainty. So, um, you know, I know, John, you and your leadership team have been working towards getting our students and our staff back in, a- and do so in a safely, in, you know, in a safe manner, and we've talked about that now for quite a while. Um, and there's been a lot of movement, right? So I think just prioritizing teacher vaccinations finally at the state level is a huge step forward for us. Um, and, you know, as both John, you and Matt have acknowledged, that there's probably something from the state level coming down our way too. But again, it's uncertain, and we have a lack, you know, there's a lack of control on our part for that. So what I would really like us to consider is just drawing a line in the sand. Here's what we're working towards, so we're all clear what our plan is. We're all marching in the same direction, and we can take some of that anxiety off the table. So I would like us, as a school committee, I think, to consider, um, just drawing that line in the sand, and saying that we are committing to getting our students back in five full days, K through twelve. And I, I, I would like us to do that. Now, if we could put a goal date around that, um, you know, in my mind, it would be April fifth, and the reason why I'm suggesting that is because that is the change in, um, in the quarter for the high school and vets, and that's a natural cutoff point. We've said to our students and families all along that they have to make a commitment for those quarters or terms or semesters, whichever it is. Um, and so I think to honor what we're asking for our students and families, we should also commit to that. Um, so that would be my suggestion, and obviously, I know that there would be a lot of planning and, um, you know, potentially obstacles that would come along with that, and I would say, you know, we would have to, John, to you and your leadership team, to bring that back to us, you know, as soon as you find what the obstacle is, so that we can problem solve, and maybe we need to adjust at that point, but I think we, if we just kind of say, this is the date we're looking towards, this is the goal that we're trying to get to, and everybody's on the same page.
My only concern with that is, I, I think it's a great idea, but we're dealing with a legally binding contract right now that actually prohibits us from doing that. I mean, the, the constraints of our legally binding contract at right now don't, doesn't allow us to get kids back in at those levels, five days a week. So it feels like a really good idea, but I often have trouble with ideas if they're not implementable. So I think what we're really saying is, we're committed to negotiating to the best of our capability to make that happen, but I don't want to give anybody false hope that this vote is, is by any means, um, a guarantee that that's gonna happen, because we, we are one half of a legally binding contract.
Um, so I'll, I'll clarify that a little bit, um, in some of the work I've been doing this week, uh, is basically, if we as a school committee change the learning model, then it necessitates, um, impact bargaining, and within impact bargaining, good faith, and in good faith, um, we're, you know, we're working within the confines of, of what our district can do. So we, if we say all of our children are coming back, and we cannot do that at six feet, then the negotiations have to start there. So how do we get all of our learners back in classrooms at less than six feet?
Okay, my concern was that we were, and you, it sounds like you've talked to legal, so you're probably gonna have a much clearer answer to this. My concern was we were taking a vote that would actually possibly force us into breach of contract, because at the end of the day, it's the school committee that made the contract, not the administration. So it's the five of us that are, I mean, as a, as a body, we are the, um, people of record for collective bargaining. So I just, I want to make sure that we, we can do this without being in breach.
Can I just follow on from that? Because I, I think it's a valid point, Sarah, and it's worth, you know, it's, it's worth raising and making sure that we're all clear, but I would say also recently, there's been precedents around this as well. Um, so I, you know, I think we're, we're actually, by doing this, we're, it's our, it's our responsibility, and we're following through on that responsibility.
I'm more for it. I just, I wanted to make sure we, I just, I didn't want to give the, I didn't want to give, I know it, you know, we all read the Swampscott paper, they're going back, and which was a little misleading to that community. I don't want to mislead our community and them say tomorrow, we're going back. It's not this, that easy.
So I think that's a good point. Um, and, and, um, you know, as I looked at this, that, over the, this past week, I went back to our February fourth meeting, um, because we did take a vote with a motion, and we, this is sort of what kind of got the, got all the gears moving. Um, and so the motion that we had taken was that we were supporting the superintendent and the principals to create a plan to bring our students back at lower distancing levels and fully in person. So that is then what actually tipped this off, and when we started negotiating with MEA again, um, and those negotiations are ongoing, um, as, as, you know, we're looking at many different things. So I think Megan's thoughts at this point are surrounding putting a date out there so that. putting a date out there so that, so that there's clarity within the community of kind of that we aren't, we aren't in this unending process. Because I think that is creating some angst out there and I understand it. And, and, you know, again, as I stated earlier, there's, there's so many sides to this and there's frustration on all sides. And there's aggravation and, and anxiety and, and data. And, and so these are really tricky pieces to balance. You know, and I think, I think, you know, I've told the story to a couple of people. I got out of my car to walk into Tower last week, I think it was last Thursday. And they play music as the kids are dropping off and Stuck in the Middle With You was playing, was flaring through the parking lot. And it just hit me as so apropos because I truly feel as though, you know, we, we really, as a school committee and as a district, we're sort of, and this, as these decision makers and tasked with making these, these choices and these motions that we're really sort of weighing out these balances. We're stuck in them, we're, we're situated in the middle and, and needing to listen to all sides and come up with a viable option that, that feels supportive to everyone. And so I, you know, these are the tricky things. These are the sort of the minefields that, that we're, we're walking through right now. And there's no easy answers. I mean, I truly don't think I could have forecasted a worse, a worse situation with the surveys is to come out basically right in the middle. Because, you know, what, what do I do with that? You know, I, if I do one thing, I'm upsetting half of, and if I do the other thing, I'm upsetting the other half. So it's, you know, these are, these are, I, I'm struggling with, with where we go with this.
So for Matt and Deanna, question is, was there like a short answer part of these surveys? Because I know we got some email feedback on, but I don't have a child in vets or high school, so I didn't, you know, get the survey. But the feedback we got was, you know, some, from some people, I don't like either, any of these options. I want option C, which, you know, I think we're always going to get for anything.
And, and that's why when we put the survey together, we were working with just those two options. So we did not have an open ended question. You know, we were tasked with taking a look at these two options and, and giving us, giving you data on those two options. I mean, if we, with, you know, eighteen hundred people, you know, possibly answering which option they want best, we'll have a lot of suggestions for our schedule. So we worked on these two that we had brought to you last week.
Okay. And then for Dan, roughly a quarter of the population said if we did reduce to three feet, they would switch from hybrid to remote. And can you accommodate that switch and still, you know, educate these kids, I guess?
Well, honestly, you know, if there's movement out in terms of, you know, where they land and, and that would be a tru, a struggle. You know, we would have to put our heads together and figure out the best opportunity and best plan for that to make sure that they have the needs met. And you're talking across four grades, right? We have sections of remote learning that are taught by marble high school teachers, but not in all sections. Some of the honor sections, we just didn't have enough teachers. So, you know, we'd have to, to take a look and reshuffle if we had to.
Because I mean, that's not insignificant, the idea that we could be unable to accommodate twenty-five percent of our, our students.
At our school, because we'd be at twenty-two percent. I, I don't want to say it'd be more impactful because, you know, the way we structured our elected remote learners is, you know, they're being taught, they follow the same schedules that we have, being taught by our teachers that are then teaching in person too. If I had twenty-two percent more, I'm sitting at eleven percent now, I would go up to a third of my school. I, sitting here right now, I, I could not guarantee that not every single student's schedule in the building would have to change. And a chunk of students would have to change teams going into the fourth quarter. And that's not just our elective remote students. And I'm not, I'm not trying to be the naysayer. I'm not trying to, to be the negative, but, but I also want it to be very upfront that if we have twenty-five percent more of our students leave the building, that's, that's very difficult for us to balance and manage without moving around a lot of students. So that's just a reality.
Matt, could you just clarify that? You're saying twenty-five percent more, so it's going to be thirty-six percent?
I'm at eleven percent right now, remote. Eleven percent of my students are remote right now. And if another twenty percent, so, you know, twenty percent of the respondents, if I extrapolate that to being twenty percent of the rest of my students that are here, so I have four hundred students that are not remote. So that would be roughly another, well, it's twenty-two, twenty-three, so roughly about ninety more students going remote. That would be a challenge to deal with. Because again, you know, this is, these, the, the people who answered the survey, I have to think worst case scenario. And even if it's not worst case scenario and only another ten or eleven or twelve percent go to match what we already have out, there's still a good number of students that would have their schedule changed. With fewer, I should be able to keep more kids on the team that they're in right now. But it, it's, it just comes to be a point of, we just don't have the spaces to, to do it within our current system now. Because nothing's perfect. It won't be all X number of kids on one.
Right.
It's never going to be like that. And I can't run a team of thirty-five, I can't run a class of thirty-five remote students and six in-person students and, and say that's the best for everybody educationally. So when we talk about social emotional learning, there's going to be kids going in the fourth quarter that most likely are not making a decision about their instructional model, but will be impacted by others. It, it's just the reality. I mean, I, I want to be upfront. You said to bring to you at some point the impacts. This will be the largest impact we have.
So I think some of the other takeaways that I had at the SAC meeting for, within the high school this afternoon was it, that many of the students there expressed a lack of desire for a change. I think the parents were a little bit more amenable to the idea. And I think one of the things that I struggle with is sort of, and, and another parent suggested something like this, that, that, that there's, there's an awareness raising campaign that regardless of whether we do this now or we do this, or, you know, this is where we're at in the fall, that, that awareness raising needs to happen. Because there's been so much data that has changed over the course of time that people kind of have, have information that maybe is not as up to date as, as it could be. I mean, you know, in public comment tonight, somebody mentioned that our buildings aren't ventilated well. Well, actually, Dr. Bucky and I sat and looked at the data from the Fussin O'Neil reports early from, from August and September. And our air exchange rates in almost all the buildings, there's a couple that we didn't actually have the air exchange rates for. But in all of the other buildings were six air exchange rates per hour. According to Dr. Dosav Allen, who is the big leading researcher on air ventilation and everything out of Harvard, his ideal filtration, his, you know, his recommended of like, these are safe buildings, is four to six exchange rates per hour. So, you know, our buildings, and if we take that into account as being even more important in a lot of the ways that our research is coming out than, than distancing, you know, but that, you know, I sit and I read article after article after article here. And, and I, I don't think that most people are, are spending that type of time because they're leading their own busy lives, digging into this type of thing. And so if, if we're going to, you know, I think one of the pieces to these moves has to be a massive awareness raising campaign of, we are saying our buildings are safe and here is why. Here are the things that we're doing. Here are the ways in which we've come to terms with the union so that, you know, our children and our teachers are safe going into these buildings. You know, obviously there's work to be done on, on all of these things. So, yeah, Megan.
Sorry, can I just ask, it's not, I don't know if it's a question or what, but, you know, I'm kind of listening to everything that everyone's saying. And Matt, I take, you know, I take your point. I, and I, and I totally appreciate it. I guess one of my concerns is we, I think we can anticipate that the state is going to start to, to be a little bit more, I don't know what the right word is. Uh, well, I don't know if I'd use aggressive, but, you know, they're going to start to take a little bit more of a stand. So I don't want us to get into the situation where we're mandated to do it and we're not ready and it's not on our timeline. And it doesn't, you know, especially when we're talking about the terms, et cetera. I mean, I, I just don't want us to get into that situation. And I want us to be prepared and I want us to be working towards, you know, an ultimate goal. And again, if I think about having some level of control on it, we want to be able to control how that works so that it is in the best interest of our students. We don't want to be mandated into that. So, you know, again, there's, there's no easy answer, hun, a hundred percent. But I just think, you know, we, I think we can predict that something will be coming from the state. And I would like us to be ahead of the curve and make sure that our plan is supporting our students and our community.
I agree.
Agreed.
Yeah. David, did you have something?
No, I, I agree with what Megan's saying there. I think, I mean, surveys, surveys are challenging. I, I don't know that we, we necessarily addressed how many people responded out of the total population. And that's always another challenge with, with surveys. I mean, I did, you know, as an example, Dan showed that there were about a hundred and six juniors that responded to the survey. And I'm, I'm guessing there's over two hundred juniors in the high school. So the response rate was about fifty percent. So do we know what the response rate was to the survey by chance overall? Matt and Daniel.
I think that was on one of the first.
About eighteen hundred students from, well, is that about it? About eighteen hundred between these? Well, I have four hundred, Dan, you've got eight, nine thousand, so.
Nine fifty.
About a third, a little less than a third, a little more than, five hundred and forty-two out of about fourteen hundred for parents.
Um, Sarah, you've had your hand up and then Emily, I see yours.
So I'm, I'm hoping that John can speak to what his thoughts on this are. And also what, what budget implications that there would be with this scenario. And do you feel that the teachers and the principals feel supported with the resources that we can allocate to them to implement this?
Yeah, I, I thought that I made the recommendation that we follow what the principals are saying and stay in the current model until April 5th, knowing that there's guidance coming from the state. There have been recent Department of Labor relations for Melrose Public Schools in terms of their agreements. And so there's almost a daily announcement. I sat in on a legal workshop with Mike Long. We have ongoing negotiations with the union. So, you know, I'm not going to speak for the principals, but I think that starting with K six on the fifteenth and then looking to make a change for the high school, middle school at their quarter change on April 5th is our best path forward at this point.
Yeah, I think that that date makes a lot of sense. And I think, I think, you know, I completely agree with what Megan had to say about, you know, we don't want to be mandated into this. It's, it's one of my frustrations with, with what's going on at the state level at this point. I guess I don't want anything coming from them that's sort of, you know, isn't, isn't tailored well enough to Marblehead. I think, you know, we've been, we've been at this for a year now. And, and we have a really good grip on, on what we're doing with our community. So I, I do also want to stay ahead of, of any kind of mandate. And I think that, that that quarter break makes a lot of sense. I personally, I was really surprised as I was talking to my eighth grader that he even saw that. He, he was like, well, it just makes complete sense with that. And I hadn't said a thing about it. It just makes complete sense that we wouldn't do anything until the quarter. Why would, why would we? Everybody's caught up at the quarter. You know, it just makes the most sense. So I think even on the younger side of, of the kids in this situation, they're seeing that that makes a lot of sense. Emily, I know you had your hand up. Sorry for saying something before you.
Okay. So I agree also with, you know, moving forward with April 5th. We did it for the younger kids using March 15th as their trimester break or cut. And so this just makes sense in how we're doing it. Kind of going off what David said about the survey. I have a hard time also kind of using that as our decision maker because, did it go out to both hybrid and remote families?
Yes.
So we don't know if some of those kids are coming into the schools or do we, or going back into hy, like?
We do. It's a very, very small percentage of the students that said they were going to make a change. I think in, in total, it might have been ten students across seven grades, across this, across seven to twelve total that were remote to hybrid, while the vast majority were hybrid to remote.
So how did, so, oh, because you had to put your name in, is that why?
Because we asked.
Knew who it was, okay.
And then we can extrapolate that if they're going to change and they were hybrid, then they're going to.
So I just wanted to clarify that. I guess I didn't realize I briefly saw the survey, so I didn't know. And that it is a small selection of people. So can we say that that's going to kind of be the pattern? If we were to get everyone to respond to the survey? I guess, you know, it's such, how do we find, you know, I think if we just say, I mean, this is what we're going to do, are you going to change your model? I don't know.
Yeah, Dan, Dan and I do sort of binding outreaches the, the last three quarters. Dan uses a form, I use an email where they have to reach out to me or their guidance counselor directly. You know, we've been talking small enough numbers that I can then talk to every family about sort of their, their reason behind their changes to make sure that that's going to really suit their needs as opposed to what they think the other model is. This, you know, I, it's, I, I'm, I'm done predicting anything. The numbers. I think the reality, I said that in my class size, you know, looking at my class sizes this year, it, it's, it's, it's hard to predict. And I was shocked. I had a lot of requests last quarter, much more than I thought to move. And, but again, you know, you, you talk with families and, and maybe they, they come to a point where it's not really the best thing once they learn the whole program. But it's, it's, it's worrisome because I've, I've, I've not seen these, these types of numbers before, you know, upwards of twenty-five percent in, in a survey. That, that's.
One second and then I'll, I also think there's something to be said for setting this April date and, and having April in our minds instead of March in our minds. That the concept of being able to go outside, of having windows open all of the time, of getting that much further out from surges or that much better data on any kind of variance that are coming into play at this point. You know, I think when those surveys were sent out, it was sort of, it was being talked about of a March date. And so my hope would be sort of to, to kind of again, push on this awareness piece that more data will come out, that we will be able to explain things, that people will get a better grasp on what, what's going on and what the reality of this situation on the ground is as we're looking to make these changes, what classrooms would look like, and how this would all roll out so that they can make a truly informed decision instead of kind of a, okay, yes, I've been for getting my child in more all along or this really makes me antsy. I, I, I need more time to, to feel comfortable with this.
And I think if I can just follow on from that too, I mean, we just heard, I'm kind of losing track of dates, but I'm pretty sure it was just yesterday when the teachers got priority on the vaccinations. So this also gives us another month to move forward with vaccinations as well. Because, you know, I take, I take the teachers' concerns to heart too, as I'm sure we, we all do. So I think, you know, really having a hard push to get teacher vaccinations done too and support that would, you know, is a, is a good step in the right direction as well.
John, you had wanted to.
Yeah, I'll let Matt go. He had raised his hand.
Sorry, Matt.
Just a two second, just to answer your question, it was a hundred and one to twelve. So a hundred and one elective to, uh, hybrid to remote versus twelve remote to hybrid.
So I think there was a piece when we were talking about surveys that was initially discussed that if people did not respond, that they would be locked into or kept in their current model. And so I have found that people that respond to surveys are those that feel passionately about whatever the survey is seeking the information on. So whether that's going back more in person or staying more in the current model. So the response rate, well, you know, could be questioned. Is that a representative sample? I think that it probably is because the people that responded to the survey wanted to make sure that their points of view were known. I do want to address the budget concern that Sarah raised. I'm not sure specifically if she could ask that in more detail, the budget question, so that we can speak to it.
So, you know, will the implications of this require us to have, you know, more than the tent, the one tent at the high school? Or will it require an increase in cleaning, which we just, you know, did away with that? That was $30,000 a week. Will it mean an increase in possibly nursing sta, like what, what increases, if any, and there may be none, would be implications of this change? I just want to make sure if we build it and they come, we fund it.
Yep. At this time, I think funding the outdoor learning spaces, and this is where I think Nan led with the parent volunteers and putting out there how much those will cost. That would be a budget implication if we're not able to fundraise that money. But in terms of cleaning or additional nursing, none of that at this time.
I did ask John to price out a few things this week, such as Dr. Benedetto's suggestion last, yeah, last week about surgical masks. And so we did get some information back on that. I think it was about $8,500 to provide surgical masks for students in grade seven to 12 every day upon entering the building. We're already doing all of the hand sanitizer pieces, so that those are at no additional cost and will continue to be there regardless of whether we make a change or not. Was there another piece that I had?
Uh, the glass shields or the Plexiglas shields for teacher desks or student desks. The dividers is what we were talking about. And the air purifiers have already been purchased. So any staff member that wants air purifiers, so that's in place.
And then I think this one goes without asking, but I, you know, we are in the business of educating children. So let's, let's ask, what in the mind of Dr. Bucky and the principals is the best educational outcome at this point with a quarter left? And I want to make sure that we're also making sure that we're paying attention to how will we educate if we lose 25% to the remote program?
I, I think, you know, I have tried to be clear from the beginning. The best is in-person every day, full days with their teachers. Getting to that is not as easy. And clearly Dan and Matt outlined some of those, particularly with the movement from hybrid to remote or remote to hybrid. But the sooner that we can get to more normal school days, the better it is for all of us. It is the common goal that we're all working toward. So the negotiations with MEA, that's the conversation. We're all working toward the same goal. So I just want to be very clear that full in-person instruction is what's best for kids. Getting there safely is important. That's why we're starting K6 with the three weeks of half days before introducing lunch, because March 15th is going to be like the first day of school. Again, children will be in classes not of seven or eight, but of 18 or 19. And so being in the classroom, what is it like to get dropped off at school? What is it like to come into school, move through the corridors, go to your specials, go to the bathroom, go to recess? Have a break. I could see Megan on April 5th transitioning to full days for K to six. We will have been able to get a group of parent volunteers to address the lunch supervision, recess supervision. So if we have that opportunity to get into the structure, get students used to what the new classrooms look like, how to navigate the buildings, then full days for K to six. And I think that the April 5th date is also a good target transition for seven to 12. As I've said several times, the commissioner is meeting with the Board of Ed tomorrow. So that conversation could dramatically change what happens if legal cases continue to be solved. I will say, anytime somebody sends me something, I will reach out to an area superintendent. And I've had several conversations this week where people say to me, what are you doing in Marblehead? Because my school committee, my parents say Marblehead's doing this. Why is Marblehead able to do that? And so I will laugh and I'm not going to name any districts that I talked to, but they're, they're hearing from their parents because we're all experiencing the same thing. Everybody wants to be back full in-person. And I do think with the plan that we've outlined for K to six for the half days leading up to, and I do think the commissioner will announce April 5th tomorrow. But we have to also remember that there are districts that not, that have not yet had students in person. And so when they talk about hybrid and remote learning and the commissioner saying those models, he would like to be able to change districts, being able to count those as structured learning time. I think it's really more focused on those fully remote districts that have not been hybrid in person yet.
We've talked about this for quite a while now. There is no easy answer. I think based on what you've just said, Dr. Bucky, I would like to make a motion to have our kids back by April 5th. I'm going to caveat that with if there are obstacles to making that happen, come back to us as soon as you find them so that we can problem solve. And if we need to adjust, we will adjust. But I'd like to make that our target goal.
Megan, I appreciate that. And I think having that directive from school committee helps us to get the pieces in place that we need to, to whether we are able to hit the target. You know, I can't commit to say April 5th, it's going to happen, but that gives us a very focused date from which to work backward.
Okay.
So I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Emily seconded.
Can we get, we don't have another meeting for two weeks, which is only, you know, about a week and a half before April 5th, right? I don't have a calendar in front of me, full disclosure. Is there a way to get an update, you know, sooner so that we, we know that we're making milestones and we know what our hurdles are? Because I, you've heard me say this a million times, we can't fix a problem till we identify it. So if, if we need more, another meeting or additional meetings to identify and address any issues, let's do that.
Absolutely. And I think, yeah, you know, this is what our third meeting in.
Three weeks.
Three weeks. Yeah, I think even, I think even less than three weeks. I think it's two weeks at this point. So, you know, I think there's a strong commitment to doing what we need to do, you know, if, if it needs, if it's best being sent out in informational, you know, sort of updates in emails from John or from the principals, you know, if there's something that school committee needs to send out or if it does make the most sense to, to make it a school committee meeting and, and get information out that way and troubleshoot, as Megan is saying, you know, be able to ask for more volunteers, all of that stuff. So, you know, I think that everything's on the table at this point.
And I just want to make one clarifying point for this April 5th date, but also kind of put it out there because fall's coming, folks, and we need plans for the fall because we need to, you know, all set. That for families that don't feel comfortable and/or have a medical need, they will be accommodated in a remote setting. I, I know that as of right now, we can do that. My concern is what happens for, you know, the fall. And I want to make sure that we, we are accommodating them with, anytime we make a major change like this, that we're accommodating these people. But we got several emails asking us about, you know, the fall. So I want to make sure that we, we address that maybe at our next meeting in, to the best of our ability, knowing that rules will come down from the state.
Right. Yeah. I think that that's something that, you know, I mean, the guidance is literally changing by the day at this point. And so I don't think that we can necessarily take any steps forward. I think we're all on top of the information that's coming out and digging into it and, and figuring it all out. So I think, you know, as we're waiting, it does seem like DSE is, is going to hand out some guidance and some directives towards the fall at some point relatively soon. And obviously we're, we're waiting on that and hopeful that, that they will, you know, do a little bit better job in guiding us in this fall, this coming fall than, than last fall.
But for April 5th, we will accommodate people. I mean, if we're switching distancing, we will accommodate changes.
Yes.
That the remote program will, will be sustained through the end of this school year.
The remote program will be sustained through the end of this year.
And anybody that wants to move into it because we've changed distancing will be accommodated.
Well, Sarah, you heard the principal say how challenging that will be. So I, I don't want to be held to something that I'm not going to be able to guarantee. Certainly Matt and Dan.
25% of our kids not coming to school.
You're muted. Yeah, you're muted.
I just, you know, Matt and Dan were very clear that they will do everything that they possibly can, but I don't want to sit at a school committee meeting on March 4th to commit to something that happens on April 5th and we see a 20% change to say that it will look exactly like the remote program that currently exists. And that will have an impact on the families that are currently engaged in that program.
Yeah.
Sarah, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying. Absolutely.
Guys, no one outside of that room can hear David. We can hear he's talking, but not what he's saying.
That's odd. He's, are you plugged in correctly? There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
But I, I don't, I think 25% is just a little bit misleading based on the survey numbers. So I don't want this to be that 25% of the people aren't going to come back to school because I'm not sure that that's a, a real number. So we, we, we know that there's people obviously that will choose not to come back to school, but I, I don't think it's order of magnitude of 25% based on what we've seen tonight. And I don't want to leave this meeting with a perception that 25% of the people.
The numbers that came from the survey and, you know, and not everybody, you know, I think they said a third of the people. So we don't know, but I mean, we can only go on the data we have and not right now is imperfect data we have.
Right. And I think that there is a commitment to continue the remote program or, you know, of remote program, you know, it, it will. And I think, you know, as Matt spoke to, you know, if, if this 30%, you know, that's going to impact in-person as well. So, you know, there's, this is not just about impacting remote and, and that type of thing. This will be, you know, we're talking about a system change here that, again, most likely is going to be mandated. So I think, you know, this is about a date and sort of getting people's focus on, on where we're headed.
And I think Sarah also asked Dr. Bucky, you know, what the best outcome was. And we all, I mean, we all, I think we all agree, the best outcome is getting back to in-person learning. And that's the objective, you know, since the anniversary of COVID brought us to this point. Now the objective is to get back to where we were before March 13th. And I think we both heard Dan and Matt say that when we get back into learning, there will be people that will need to be accommodated and, and they'll, they'll do just like they've done for the last year. They'll, I'm sure they'll do the best they can to accommodate those people one, one way or another. But I think the goal is to be, is to be back in school. I mean, that's what we've been hearing socially and emotionally. But yes, I, I'm in full agreement, Sarah, that there are people, you know, if, if they're not back in school. But I think, I think the district will, will find the resources and find a way to, to work with those people, just, just like we, just like we've done over the last year with all the different scenarios that we've had.
And I think a lot of this signaling from DSE over the past week or week and a half is, is indicative of where it's headed. You know, there's been a lot of local control over the past year. And, you know, basically almost all local control. And so, but that, you know, on March 4th last year, that did not exist. You know, this is, we were heavily regulated as to how long we needed to be in our buildings, how many days we needed to be in our buildings, you know, what all of that looked like, time on learning, all of that. And so we are headed back to a much more regulated state in, in, in total. So I think, you know, we're, we're still proceeding as we need to proceed. I think as a school, we're doing what needs necessary to be done. I think, you know, talking about and, and making any kind of commitments to next fall, I think would, is foolish at this point. And that we've sort of set the state of, and gotten it out there of April 5th. And that, or, you know, we're in the process of setting it. I think we've got a motion second on the table right now. And that that's sort of, you know, we will, we will be updating regularly as to the progress on that and as to the DSE guidance to that and, and where all of this is headed.
And I think just to your point, Sarah, that, you know, getting information out there will make people feel more comfortable. If we get, if we can post that Fosse and O'Neill report and talk about the air exchange rates and things and get that out there, that may get some information out there that, that changes people's comfort level.
Well, I, I think the pool testing might change people's comfort level as well. That's another factor that just started this week that we heard about an hour and a half ago.
I think even.
I'm hopeful that that will be.
Yeah, I think even us moving to get the athletes tested, I think, you know, what.
And the athletes being tested, exactly.
It makes those kids a little antsy to be sitting next to kids who are playing football right now at, at closer distancing. So, you know, all of this information, all of these steps forward, I think, you know, we're, 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 we're moving. I do have a motion, a second on the table, to set that April 5th date as, as a goal to getting our children K through 12 back into the building. So I will take a roll call vote. Sarah Gold, yes. Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Emily Barron?
Yes.
And David Harris?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Matt and Dan. We appreciate all the work that you guys have done on those surveys all week and, and really kind of digging down. And Dan, thank you also for meeting with the juniors. I did have a parent reach out to me regarding that, the fact that that had gone on. And, and so I'm, I'm really grateful that you've sat down with them and, and kind of understood their survey and where they were coming at and, and what they've been hearing. Anything else, John?
I just needed to update the committee on two things. The Brown, Lucretia and Joseph Brown Elementary School Principal Search. We have put together a search committee for that. On that committee will be myself, Nan Murphy is the Assistant Superintendent, Matt Fox as an education rep, David Harris as school committee rep. And I apologize, I learned that if there's a school committee rep on a group, that that is yours to pick. And unfortunately, I think the horse is out of the barn on this one, but David has agreed to be the school committee rep. Cindy Schiefer as a parent rep, Brian Burke as a parent and CPAC representative, Emily Moore as a parent representative, Rachel Levitt as an educator rep, and Melissa McGinnis as an educator rep. And we have a tentative meeting, initial launch meeting scheduled for next Wednesday.
That sounds like a, sounds like a great committee.
Good luck. Just to kind of clear up past precedents, I think, you know, this is a, this is a superintendent hire and, and not a school committee hire. And I think, you know, in the past, I think, you know, a name has been brought to us by the superintendent. And, and we just sort of give the nod of like, yep, thanks, sounds good, you know? And in this case, it's going to be David. So.
Okay.
Can you just note which of those, who are the parents, our elementary school parents?
The parent representatives are Cindy Schiefer, Brian Burke, and Emily Moore.
Okay. Is there an elementary school parent?
I don't believe so. Nobody that would have a student in the school.
Okay.
And then the other committee that Stephen Quiatek is putting together is transitioning our website to the Blackboard Connect platform. And he has asked for a school committee rep and both Emily and Sarah Fox have expressed interest in that. And I don't want to misstep again, so I don't know if the committee votes on that or it's left to me, or I, I just thought I would bring it to the group.
I'm fine yielding that to Emily.
Yeah, I think Emily, you know, Emily, I know, has done a lot on the building committee website and she certainly manages and puts up various things on the school committee website too. So I think that makes a lot of sense at this point.
She's our resident techie on the committee. Is that the title you always wanted? Always.
Probably not what you thought that you'd be pigeonholed into.
My husband would be proud.
All right. Sounds good.
Good. Thank you.
Lots of great work going on. Okay. So that leads us. Okay. So that leads us to our schedule of bills. Let me find that. Um, so we did have that schedule in our packet in the Dropbox. Um, so can I get a motion to approve the identified schedule of bills? Totalling $3,126,033.26.
So moved.
Megan moved. Can I get a second?
Second. Sorry.
Emily, second. Was there any questions on that? All right. Sarah Gold, yes. Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
David Harris? And Emily Barron?
Yes.
All right. Thanks, guys. Uh, and so that will lead us up to Michelle. Um, we've got an FY22 budget update.
Do you, do you want me to take that? Would that be easier?
Sure.
Um.
I'm here.
Sorry, Michelle. I didn't.
Um, there really is no update at this point with the, oh, I mean FY22. Yeah, certainly. Meg, you can talk about the, um, meeting we had this week. I thought it was FY21. There's nothing to report on 21 since last week.
So on fiscal year 22 budget, we did have a subcommittee meeting this week. Um, what came out of it was John and his team will prioritize his list of priorities. Yeah, I know, I know that sounds funny, but we've got six of them. So let's, you know, kind of rank order those as well as, you know, the additional requests that have come out through the leadership team, um, deep dive. So he's, you know, working on that with his team. Um, I, I do think it's important to note that we, um, I think in our last meeting, we had mentioned that we'd met with the town and that was a very positive meeting and we'll be meeting with them again. I don't think it's next week, maybe the, the week after. Um, but I just want to reiterate that that so far has been a really positive working relationship that, you know, the town is incredibly collaborative with us. Um, and I am going to have to push back on some of the public comment because I do think there is a lot of give and take, um, with that relationship. And I do think they ask us tough questions that make us kind of think about things and, and we ask, you know, John and Michelle the same types of things. So I do think there's a lot of give and take there. And I would say also that I want to make very clear that from the town side, the selectmen, you know, Jackie does sit on, you know, she does attend our joint meetings. Fincom and the town administrator so far have been incredibly supportive of funding our schools. Um, so I think that's an important point to make. I don't think I can say that enough times. Um, I think I've been saying the same thing for three years now, but I just want to make sure that that, that that's clear. I think the other thing just for this committee to be aware of is we did have tentatively scheduled the public hearing for the 18th. We are going to be working with the town, um, on, on, um, work backing into that date based on when we need to present at Fincom. So we may be changing that date, um, and we'll get back to you, you know, as soon as possible with that, but just kind of a heads up.
I appreciate that note about the town, Megan, um, because I think, you know, that is something that we've worked incredibly hard on these last three budget cycles. Um, and, you know, we've, we've come a long ways. We've been through a lot and, um, you know, as a, as a school district as well as a town. Um, and I think, you know, one, you know, there's always, there's always bright spots in, in every, you know, tough spot that we, we traverse, and I think that's one of them. Um, you know, we've talked a couple of weeks ago about, you know, land and everything like that. Like I think that the, the, the relationship we have at, at all levels at the town right now is a really good one and that that is a really good thing, that, you know, maintaining those, those relationships and, and having all of us on similar pages, you know? I think, you know, it's silly to expect, you know, the five of us aren't always on the same page. Um, but we're, we're certainly on similar pages and headed in the, in the same direction and that that's a really good and really important note to make.
Yeah. And I think also, you know, this is my own opinion on it is that had we not been in a global pandemic, we might be in a different place than where we are now. And I, I'm saying that really from a community perspective, um, because it's hard, I mean, we've just spent what, almost two and a half hours talking about, this is a hard place, a hard place to be, but I think we've all, I think in this regard, we're working, all working really well together and supportive of each other. So I think, you know, again, given where we are, I just wanted to make that point. So.
Thanks. All right. Um, that was all that we had there. So that moves us on to school committee things. Um, so as we did, um, mention last week or have on our agenda last week, we had quite a few different policies that we're updating. Uh, the face covering policy, um, and then a couple that Emily and I with John's help have been working on from the policy subcommittee and then the J policies that are on there, which were part of an audit. I believe at the DSE level, um, to the special education program and the ELL program. So, um, that, those are reflected in that change. So I will, um, this is, you know, in, we've, we've covered these quite a few times in open session. We were at our, at our voting time. So I will ask for a motion to accept the changes to policies EBCFA face covering, IHBAA, observations of special education programs, IHCA, summer schools, JFABD, homeless students enrollment rights and services, JFABE, educational opportunities for military children, JFABF, education opportunities for children in foster care.
Did you ask for a motion?
I did.
Okay. So moved.
Thank you. Megan moved. Can I get a second?
Second.
Emily, second. Uh, was there any questions on those? All right.
This wasn't on as a vote, right? Was that just a mistake?
Um, it, it does say under one, the vote is actually just over to the side, uh, policies to review and vote.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, for the observations of the special education program, that was the one where I saw the most redlining. And I didn't know if the way I was reading it, if that was because of possibly, you know, things with COVID that we're worried about having more people in. Cause there was a lot of redlining in that one.
Um, let me see if I can pull that one back up really quickly. Um, most of what we've done is really looking at best practice with those. So we will look, when we look at them at the policy subcommittee level, we, we pull up quite a few other districts and kind of compare and contrast and then discuss what makes the most sense for our district. Just looking at that I.
We added that note at the bottom because that was on, um, we didn't have it and it was on multiple other ones that we.
We looked at.
So that it was like a huge piece that we just added. Okay. All right. So it doesn't change the policy. It just lends some clarification?
Yeah. Yep. All right. Um, Sarah Gold, yes. Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Emily Barron?
Yes.
And David Harris?
Yes.
All right.
Muted. Yes. Yes.
David, yes. Emily?
Yes.
Sorry. All right. That was five to zero. Thank you, everyone. Um, that leads us to subcommittee and liaison updates. Are there any? I don't think anybody's in that suite. So.
I gave the budget update.
Emily, did you have something?
Um, I have a Metco update or just an event. The annual cultural celebration is happening. Um, the date's been set for May 14th at 6:30. It's going to be outside COVID friendly. Um,
May what?
14th.
Thanks.
And it's just really exciting that we are able to do it this year and there's a big committee that's, um, working on getting everything together. So that to save the date.
That is really exciting. Um, I think that was basically the last thing that happened in the district last year. I know Megan and I went. Um, and it was a really fun event. Um, great food, great entertainment by the kids. Um, so I'm, I'm thrilled to hear that that's happening.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah.
So, um, Emily is the resident technology person. I will be the resident nag here. Okay? So, um, we have this new school committee website, which is great. I would just like to implore us all to get our minutes approved at our subcommittee level and posted up on the website. And if we add meetings or change them, just try to, you know, with Lisa and Emily's support to get that, um, calendar updated because the, that website's only as good as the data we put out, out there. And I did talk to Emily again this week about looking into that push notification um, functionality, because I think that's an important one for the community. So that if we do make changes, um, we, we can get that out there. I have no idea how easy or difficult it is. Um, so, but that is something that, you know, will, we're aiming to get done. But I just want to make sure, you know, we all get, I know minutes are boring, but they're really important. And if we can get those out there and updated, that would be great.
Yep, absolutely. Thanks, Megan.
So for facilities as the same as last month, um, we're in a holding pattern until we finish that review. Um, Michelle had said it's going to be due in, um, she said a few, I think last Wednesday or a few days ago, uh, two to three weeks. And so we, um, are going to have an off cycle meeting and probably an additional meeting as well. Um, because once that report comes in, we'll have a lot of work to do.
And, um, policy, just to note, is gonna, we, we are, we meet on the second Tuesday. It should be next Tuesday. Um, John's got a conflict this month, so we're punting it to the Tuesday after, I think is the 16th, if I'm remembering correctly. All right.
Can I just say, um, minutes and dates, everything, if you send them to me in an email or text me, I can update the calendar with information and date changes pretty quickly. So I just need to have.
And Lisa has set up, um, a drive folder for subcommittees with a, with one folder within it being strictly for minutes so that if we dump them there after they've been voted, that then Emily, Emily or Lisa, whoever are doing the posting can easily access them and, and get them up right away. David, anything new with the building project this week?
Uh, there is, but I think Dr. Bucky has a couple of quick updates related to, um, the meeting that you had today that you told me about and, right?
I'm sorry for looking at you blankly. Uh, we had a meeting, uh, with the moving company and had the initial discussion about uh, what it will look like to take three buildings and pack up rooms and move them, uh, into, uh, the new building. And having done this in two other districts, um, I know that if you allocate five boxes, teachers will want 15 and moving into a new building is not moving all the furniture and 20 years worth of supplies, materials and that. And so that was a good conversation with the moving company, uh, to talk about, um, kind of just preliminarily what the move will look like and, uh, some tentative benchmark dates, uh, about teachers packing up their rooms and uh, what they will use and where that stuff will be stored. So, uh, not a long meeting today, but a good one.
Right. And I, and I think it's, it's worth noting that, um, you know, unlike a move where you might just get allied movers, this is, this is a very specialized moving group that, um, our OPM and Gilbane have worked with them before. They specialize in, in moving labs and hospitals and schools. So, um, they're very focused on, they have a lot of legwork to do where they'll, you know, take stock of what's going to be moved and, and it's going to be a very precision move when it get, when it comes down to it.
Absolutely.
Yep. So that's real exciting. And there have been some ongoing discussions this week continuing on furniture and, and equipment with the displays taking place, right? At the, at the Vets stage.
Uh, we had a kind of furniture gallery set up on the stage at Vets for, uh, teachers and teams of teachers or interested people to go in and look at chairs and desks and other furnishings and to, you know, check out materials and textures and there's, uh, small wares, uh, that for cafeteria and nurse and custodians and the STEM lab and classrooms. And so Donna and Sean have been working, uh, with teachers and teams of teachers to get those, uh, completed. And then there will be an update, I think, at the building committee meeting this month on where that, uh, the FFNE process is. This is an exciting process for teachers because so much of the building committee process has been the building committee and they have teacher reps which have done an amazing job. But now it gets more personal. What will my classroom look like? What will the supplies, materials, equipment, desks? And to have voice in that process, um, this is just a really exciting phase of the project for educators.
Thank you. And then I have one other thing here. This will probably be, um, the least dramatic, uh, update that people have seen from, from a pitcher standpoint, but, um, this is really exciting. I have to say it's something that does keep people up at night on the construction project. This was at 3:15 today. As people know, it's over by Tower School at the corner of Dartmouth Road. And the new pole is in, uh, Verizon puts the pole in, in this part of town. And then the infrastructure that goes on the pole, uh, between Marblehead Light and Verizon starts from here. But why this is critically important and it, and it's repositioned is the power will now go underground from this point out to Dartmouth Road and take a right-hand turn. And hopefully within, um, by next week, we'll start to see digging in the road where the underground power will go to the school and we'll be well on our way to having the three-phase power that we need at the new school. So I just want to say it's a big milestone. I was excited to see the pole up and I wanted to share that.
Thanks, David. As always, there's exciting work going on over there. All right. So that takes us, um, into our final portion. Um, any new business? All right. Um, we had a couple of things of correspondence. Um, one, um, was of course, a piece of correspondence that is in the Dropbox this evening. Um, John had written a letter to Lori Erlich, uh, just asking that the Johnson and Johnson vaccines be prioritized for teachers. Um, you know, this letter was written and sent before, um, Biden had made his mandate the other day and, and Baker followed suit um, in binding spaces for the teachers. Um, but you know, just to kind of highlight the, the continued work on that. Um, you know, we, we're Johnson, um, hard at work trying to see if Marblehead can, um, with the board of health can get some kind of a clinic. Um, you know, we've had, heard from other, um, communities that they've been able to pull this off. So we are, you know, kind of diligently trying to chip away at that in hopes that we can do that for our teachers and, and, um, staff, which would be great. Um, you know, just kind of always, always trying to, to move things forward as, as quickly as possible. Um, and kind of using every avenue in which to do that. Um, so, um, and you know, I would just encourage everyone to stay up on when you, they can get vaccinated. Because as we have this conversation around our older learners, you know, most of these vaccines are not okay for most of our learners. But, you know, some of our learners are of age to be able to receive these vaccines. And some of our learners do have medical conditions that allow them to be in the queue already. So I think it's important to note that, you know, it's not only just at the teacher level that our students can be involved in this too, as well as our parents. You know, particularly those who might be volunteering to come into the schools, um, you know, uh, anyone who can get that shot, um, is, is, you know, that's a good thing.
John, is there talk about, I mean, we talk about the staff and, and everybody to get the students in, but is there talk about making the students in that building part of, you know, bringing them into that phase too, because that will add to the safety in the buildings?
I don't think most of our students, because I think the, of the students who qualify for age.
About half.
Well, and of the ones that qualify by age, I highly doubt most of them have, are qualified to actually receive the shot at this point or are within the queue.
Saying, could they qualify under that K through 12 stipulation? Or is it only staff?
It's, it's teachers and childcare workers and it's, it's pretty specific. Um, John and I received, and, and this is just kind of coming into my head, John and I received an email from Helene Hazelit today, um, regarding the Dollars for Scholars scholarship. And so they are working on a fundraising campaign. I wanted to note it here because I would like for, you know, they've got various businesses, um, throughout town that are offering percentages of their, of purchases and sales that are going into the Dollars for Scholars, um, fund. So I was just going to run it past the committee to see if maybe that we could put that up on the school committee website. Um, to just get that a little bit more out there. Um, you know, that, that scholarship fund does do a lot for our students. Um, in, in giving funds out as they move on to, to, to higher education. Um, so if that's okay with everybody. Okay, great.
Send it over.
All right.
It is now official. There's absolutely no reason to read the weekly update. There is nothing in it tomorrow that has not been discussed tonight as school committee.
Everything. Um, I will note too, um, I got a very late request, um, you know, that about from a, a, um, a petition that's been going around. Um, I, it is in our inboxes, I believe. Um, we'll all go through it. Um, you know, I, I do want to just note it in correspondence because it's come in. I have not really gone through it at all. Um, I know it's talking about a return of students to the. I know it's talking about a return of students to the classroom. So hopefully, you know, a lot of what's in it, it has been covered this evening and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll dig into that and put it in correspondence or somewhere else on our agenda in an upcoming agenda, in an upcoming meeting. All right. That moves us to our second phase of public comment. I will start with Donna Weiner. Just state your name and address for the record again.
Great. It's Donna Weiner, 36 Mugford Street. And I just wanted to start by saying it's abundantly evident that everyone is working really hard at every level. From the teachers and the support staff to the school committee and the superintendent. I just want to say thank you. I very much appreciate that. And then I remember Mr. Fox and Mr. Bauer stating a reason why vets and the high school were being considered as a unit when these decisions are made. I can't remember what that reason is, but I just wanted to say that I would encourage you to consider veterans and high school, their own entities. I have a student in each building and there, it's a very unique and separate experience. And there may be changes that you could make for one, that you couldn't roll to both. And I wouldn't want you to rule out something just because it's not for everyone. Because we're already making changes for the K through six and separating out that group. So there may be additional segregation that we could do. And then I listen carefully, but if you, you nod off for a minute, you miss a lot. So I may have missed it. I heard very clearly that we are working to get our K through six back to full days by April 5th. And then I also heard the motion to get all students back in the building by April 5th. But seven through 12, they are in the building right now. What is the goal for the older kids on April 5th? Are we looking to, to do one of the models that Mr. Fox or Mr. Bauer proposed? I just missed what you approved and I'm happy to read the superintendent's update tomorrow to fully understand it. But I just wanted to let you know that I missed it. Thank you.
So although we don't usually respond to public comment because that motion was specifically about clarifying this information, I'll clarify it. We are looking for the superintendent to make plans to have all of our learners back in buildings five days a week by the fifth. With the fifth as a goal. So hopefully that clarifies it.
Is that five full days, Sarah, or just five days a week?
I think that's to be determined. I think obviously through that, that it's, and Megan, maybe, did you, I, I'm not remembering the, the, the motion exactly. Say full days in there?
That was my intent, you know, five full days. But again, I want to caveat, if there are obstacles, then we need to bring those to the table. And if we need to readjust, we will readjust. But I think that should be, that should be our goal.
That was said.
Okay, great. All right. Donna, did you have anything further?
I don't. Thank you very much for the, for the clarification.
Thank you. Erin Noonan?
Erin Noonan, Beverly Ave. First, thank you for your service on this committee. The stress of sitting in your seats at this moment in history is surely enormous. And I am sure that you have all had many sleepless nights, nights. I, I am seriously concerned about the consequences of this year's budget discussions. Honestly, I am, I'm, I'm struggling to understand the attitude that we would have maybe been in a different circumstance had we not had the pandemic. Our needs have not changed because we are at a pandemic. In fact, actually, they have only increased. So the logic is, isn't sitting well with me personally. And every year it's another excuse after another. First it was, you know, in FY20, we need to restore credibility in the town and clean their house and wait for, to onboard our Bill McCall dip who's going to redo a deep dive into the budget. And then, then it was not that year. We had to wait the next year because we are onboarding a new superintendent. And now this year we have a new superintendent and a quote pandemic. Like we are in the midst of a national crisis in public education, the likes of which we have never experienced in history before. If this is not reason alone to stand up and demand more funding, I don't know what is. There will be a huge mental health as well as educational gap. It is still unclear how our district plans to address the learning loss of students and resources we will provide to those that require remediation and academic support from this year. I have attended every meeting and budget meeting, for that matter, and have yet to hear any plans to address this. I'd like to advocate for our school committee to direct our administration to identify and detail the educational gaps, learning loss and needs that common sense informs us will exist due to the past year of significant school closure and pandemic. I would like to see the school committee charge the administration with creating a plan to address this and a budget allocation as well. The town is asking the school committee to level fund operating costs, which does not even include the addition of any of the new budget priorities that, you know, are, have been laid out, which are very modest and, you know, and it also doesn't even account for the reduction of staff, a principal, teachers and other positions. I've also not heard any plans to address the long deferred maintenance needs or implement any of the forthcoming recommendations from the facilities assessment we just had paid for to have done this year. You know, there's just been a long list and everyone knows it, you all know it, of all the ways in which we could improve our schools. Again, the maintenance, I mean, Principal Murphy has been asking for curriculum coach for two years in a row now. We could be, we could be funding gifted and talented programs that our benchmark districts are offering. We need more guidance counselors at the high school. We need to plan for curriculum review at the high school or reinvent the curriculum director roles and department heads that once existed that had supervisory roles and focused on curriculum. We need to implement and develop STEAM innovation curriculum and programming. And finally, we need money to transition more special education students to a co-taught model to maximize inclusion in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Catherine Martin.
Sorry about that. Catherine Martin, 29 West Shore Drive. I wholeheartedly agree with every single thing Erin Noonan just said. I just heard a budget update that did not talk about the budget and that's concerning to me because I sat in the budget subcommittee meeting the other day and we're still a million dollars off from the town. And does saying that we have an awesome working relationship mean that there, we're, we're getting that million dollars? Because the way I heard it from Michelle was we were going to start to need to make cuts. So if we're going to take that $212, $100,000 and get phones and wifi and wireless, it's coming off our, our operational budget. That's the way I'm hearing it. We're going to choose between phones and personnel. We're going to choose between math curriculum and personnel. We're going to have to make these choices because we did not go forward like Erin said and look for an override this year or look for more funding. We've kicked the can down the road, the road two more years. I didn't prepare a statement tonight. I didn't know I was going to speak. I expected to hear a budget update that was going to address this gap that I heard about in subcommittee. That's not what I heard tonight. I didn't see any numbers. We're a month out from the budget hearing. We've got a million dollar gap. We're, just like Erin said, we're going into this horrible educational crisis and we were in bad shape before COVID. The maintenance, the curriculum that's overdue, the guidance counselors that we need to hire, the curriculum coaches, the technology. If it wasn't for COVID, I don't know that the technology would come to light. We have a million dollars in technology needs. I, I don't understand how we're going to resolve this budget in a manner that is student facing. I have heard people going ballistic because we want to get a communications director. I'm like, why, you should be going ballistic over the fact that $42,000 is such a large amount of money in a $42 million budget that, that we can't even give our superintendent that leeway to hire that position. This, this budget this year is very concerning. And I'm going to quote Bill McCall, you don't find a million dollars in pencils. He said that last year. Same holds true this year. You guys need to get the work. The budget falls on the school committee. The five of you, get your heads together. If you need to put heat on our administration to get more of a needs-based budget, you have a month to do it. But right now, it's the funding for next year is scary. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. All right. That's all the hands that I have raised. So that leads us to adjournment. So I will adjourn us at 9:41. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, Dan.